Pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Can everybody hear all right? Yes, people up in the back, can you hear? Can you hear me now? Okay, great. Well, I haven't, yeah. Please silence your cell phones or turn them off, thank you. Why don't you do that, too? Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, April 27, 2018, at 9 o'clock at the community center here at 3,500 Edgewater Drive in Sebring. Consent agenda. Minutes of the board meeting, this regular meeting held Friday, March 9. Treasurer's report and golf financials on February 28, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Board discussion. Public comment. Chrissy?
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
Action agenda. The first item on the action agenda is a presentation, the audit financial statements by McDermott, Davis &amp; Associates. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Chris, Tanya, do you want to introduce him?
Good morning, supervisors. Matt Lee, CPA, our lead auditor, is here this morning with McDermott and Davis to present the audit to you this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I usually start these presentations with a brief overview of some of the financial highlight on the first slide after this one. We start with the audit opinion always because we issue the highest opinion we can for an audit, and that is an unmodified opinion. It's basically a clean opinion that we found no material misstatements. The, we have the general fund, we show an increase for the year. It's, the biggest item of note is that there is a nice, healthy reserve representing about 153% of last year's expenditures. There was about a million and a half of new construction on the maintenance facility, one of the biggest outlay for the year. And the water fund showed a decrease because the water fund paid for most, for the facility from the reserve fund, and that represents the largest contributor to the water fund's decrease. Otherwise, it showed an operating income of about $350,000. And then we also have the management comment that has repeated for, you know, for quite some time now regarding the non-payment on the special assessment note. Next slide is a, we will show you some trends here. We've got, you can see that the general fund's been pretty stable over the last several years. And, next slide. This is a analysis of the revenues, revenues and expenditure comparison, and you can see the effects of the transfers out mainly to the golf fund and how it affects the general fund. Next slide. And here's the water and sewer fund. We can see the effect here of the recent increase in water rates and how the golf fund is now, or the water fund, excuse me, is now doing a good job of covering expenses on a, on a year-over-year basis. And this is the trend analysis for the water and sewer fund net position, which shows you, you can see the effect of the decrease for the funds transferred out for the maintenance facility. Any questions?
Not on that so far.
Anybody at all? Anything? Okay.
No questions? Any public questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
The second item on the action agenda is Resolution Number 2018-04/13-10. A resolution of Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve change order number two with KDL Underground for an increase in the amount of $13,250 to remove and replace the culvert underneath Alito Avenue. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Tanya? Or Mike?
The reason why this change order is being asked for is the culvert, when, when we originally went out there to look, it was covered up. So we weren't really sure if it was good or bad, so we did put in the, in the bids to start. Once we started digging, found it, it was, it was in terrible shape. That's why, that's why we came forward today. For that street. It was all rotted and stuff, and it's got to get done, so, I mean, and now's the time to do it.
Any comment from the board? I just have a quick question for you, Mike. I was over there a couple times, so. We did do the work over there, and then we resawed it, and now we're just going to replace that culvert, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So the original, the original note said that it was caused by a storm event? Is that correct?
Well, yes, yes. The storm, the storm in age. It washed out in that area.
Excuse me. It, we didn't realize how, how bad or condition it was because there was so much silt inside. And after they had, after they had cleaned the downstream ditch, that storm we had, I think it was on a Tuesday after they had cleaned it, it washed most of the silt out of the pipe because before it didn't have anywhere to go because the ditch was, was full. But once it washed it out, we could then take pictures and view that it was in disarray and bad shape.
I don't think it has much to do with it, that you guys missed it, after looking at it, needs to be done. My only question is, when you go east, is that going to be trenched out, too? I think Mike said it would be. But it's, it goes right up against some high dirt there. Would that be okay, and it just go north and south, the water? As it comes out of the?
You talking about along Alito?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll, we don't have any, like, major cleaning going on, but they'll clean out around where the pipe's going to be installed, in the, in the adjacent area. They're not going to clean everything around the whole road for this change order.
No, but I meant in the future, when you, with all the building on Granada now, will there be a, an easement in the middle like we have Wester there? Will it be dug out?
Our, our plan is, Michael, is, is yes, to address that.
Okay, okay.
Michael, just one question. Where are we on Unit 2 and 5? Do you have any timing on when we're going to look at those?
We just received the bids on Tuesday for the Unit 2 culvert cleaning. We received five bids. So we'll be bringing that to the board at the next meeting. Okay? Unit 5?
Bids just came in on Tuesday.
Yeah, bids just came in Tuesday.
Ready for that.
Okay, bring it to the board.
That was the big four. Two.
Any other further comment from the board? Public comment? You have to take the podium, young lady. Nicole? Yes, Nicole, you need to take the, yeah. Yes, yeah. We want to get it official, we want you on record.
And please identify yourself.
Okay, my name is Nicole Benich. I'm just, the question I'm asking is that I noticed that they, they did a lot of cleanup, the culvert between Granada and Matanzas, and they sawed it all, which is very nice. And, of course, I walk across Alito all the time, but when you're talking about a culvert, are you talking about going underneath the road? But then where, I know Alito is just a small road, but where does it come from? Where does that, all that water come from to go down the culvert, so to speak?
Mr. Michael, I'm sure you can explain that.
It's just like Mike was just saying, it's, um, the back of Matanzas. So it comes from, actually from here, this area here, all the way to Alito. So it's draining from now, the area.
Like in, in the forested area and that sort of stuff? Which they are now ripping apart to build whatever. Okay, thank you.
Did that answer your question, Nicole? Okay. Any other further public comment? Okay, Chrissy, roll call.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
President Camp?
Next resolution, Resolution Number 2018-04/13-11. A resolution of Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve budget amendment number three to the 2018 budget for insurance reimbursements. Do I have a vote, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, Omar?
Good morning, supervisors. Omar DeJesus, Finance Director. So this budget amendment here, we all know Hurricane Irma's impact still, we're still feeling those effects. We've repaired and done a lot of work as far as projects. We filed a lot of insurance claims and FEMA claims. This is the first set of reimbursements that we've received from insurance. The first claim was regarding the Turtle Run pump station that went down. The cost that we, we spent to repair that pump station, due, due to the electrical failure, was $69,000. Insurance took out the deductible, 2% of the value, and reimbursed us for $57,336. So we're putting those revenues into the budget and then allocating some budget for hurricane expenses. The second claims were for all the roofs damaged, which includes the snack shack building, the four cart barns, the two restrooms, and the Unit 23 office, and we were reimbursed $31,650. We have set that for RFP. In order to sign bids and get them all completed, we're going to receive bids for shingle and for aluminum, and then we'll bring that back to the board and see if we want to, what the differences will be, whether we want to go with aluminum or shingle, and see if we need a budget amendment for that as well. So that should be coming due, I believe, in the next couple of weeks, yeah. Is there any questions?
Yeah, this is the, the bid that you're putting out, is that for addition, every, all the buildings like you were talking about, Michael?
Yes, we're getting prices on all the buildings, we can decide, you know, some can be metal, some can be shingle, we can do them all, we can do some.
So the plan is to try to do it one way, all the buildings?
Correct.
But they're going to bid every one of those individually, according to what I saw in the document?
Exactly.
Are they going to do them individually?
Bid.
Each building, yes.
They'll price out each building à la carte, so you can select which ones you want done.
Would it not be advantageous to get a total bid? Would we get a discount if we gave somebody the whole thing?
Well, each vendor's going to price out every single roof. They will provide one total bid, but each one will have an itemized, you know, itemized line item as well. So the snack shack will have a price.
If you give somebody, somebody a selection, you know, five buildings, give me five bids, he's going to give you five individual bids, right? If I say, well, what if you want to do?
It's going to be one bid, it's going to be broken down into pieces. It's going to be one bid by vendor, but he's going to break down what the cost is for the snack shack, what the cart cost is for the cart barn, because they're different sizes, they're different dimensions.
You think they'll get the best price doing it that way?
Yeah, just because of competition, we, we believe so. I think so.
And that's the cart barns, both cart barns?
That's all four cart barns.
And all, and all the restrooms, as well as the snack shack?
Correct.
Okay. I thought we were looking about, around $50,000, right? Isn't that the original, no?
Our initial quotes that we received for metal on all the buildings was about $44,000.
So somewhere in the $40,000 to $50,000?
Yeah, that's for going to metal.
I really think that you can get a better price if you tell somebody I give you the whole thing. I mean, I can't imagine how you would?
Right, right. That's what we plan on doing is, is, but the, the reason why we bid it out this way, we're going to know what each building costs us, but it's all one bid. Whatever contractor that comes in here, we're bidding the whole job, all, all jobs together.
All right, so if individually, at up to 50, you guys are telling me you're going to negotiate it for low 40s or something like that? You won't accept the 50?
I think it's going to come in cheaper than that, actually.
I'm sorry?
I, I mean, my opinion, it's going to come in cheaper than 45.
No, I'm just picking a number. I mean, whatever the number is à la carte, I assume we're going to get a better price when we, when we end up doing this.
Right, absolutely. Because they'll be on site already. They'll be set up, set up on site, and they'll go from one job to another, so obviously it's cheaper, yes, you're right.
It's understandable, this would give us, give us an option if we decided we didn't want one of the cart barns for the next 10 years, then we could put shingles on it if it would be cheaper, or just not do it, period.
Any further board comment? Public comment?
Tom Costy, resident. Perhaps I'm mistaken, but I thought there was somewhere in the policy manual that the roofs for the public buildings at Sun and Lake are supposed to all be similar and match. As I recall, when we put the clubhouse up, we went with the standing seam, I guess that's called standing seam. David Helbig called it a chicken, chicken coop roof. On the clubhouse, we replaced the cart barn roof with a similar roof. We redid the roof on the island pavilion out here with the same roof that we had on the rest of the buildings. But now we're, and we've replaced the roof on Town Hall with a similar roof to what's on the clubhouse and the cart barn. But we're considering roofs on the golf course to be maybe shingle, maybe this or that. Is that, is it no longer in the policy manual that we're going to try to keep the roofs and the appearance of the district buildings similar?
What we're trying to do is, we're trying to match all the roofs at Sun and Lake to look like the clubhouse, to look like the district office, yes.
Including the snack shack?
Yes.
And the Johns on the golf course? So why are we getting prices on shingles?
The reason why we're getting two prices is insurance for reimbursement purposes will only reimburse for as-is condition. So they're in shingle condition, the board will need to decide whether they want to pay the additional to have the metal roofs put in place.
Okay, so we still have a policy, we're going to match roofs on the, it's on, thank you. Thanks, Tom.
George Puffenberger, resident. Just a question, what's the usage on all of our cart barns now? Well? What's the occupancy of them?
Well, there's golf carts in them. I mean, there's golf carts in most of them. The district has used part of the, also for storage, too, but we're actually cleaning all those out right now because we have the new area that we can store.
So when you clean them out, how many's going to be vacant?
Andy's working on that right now.
Hi, Ron Wunderling with Billy Kessler Golf. I can pull a report after the meeting in terms of how many people rent carts, but it's, the last time I looked at it was last budget time, I want to say it's probably around 20% being utilized by members. The rest is being utilized.
Do we think it's time to remove some of them?
Correct.
We've certainly got an abundance of them.
Various storage, so. So they are underutilized for members for storing carts.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Did I understand correctly, 20% usage?
It's been a year since I looked at it, but it was, I, it's went down each year from people moving out of condos and moving into homes, and so, it may be more than 20%, but it was, it's not as significant as it used to be.
Any additional public comment? Chrissy, roll call, please.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
I'm going to rearrange a little bit of the, the schedule here because we have some petitions and communications, and it's important to read the petitions and communications before we have the dog park discussion. Okay, so what I'd like to do at this moment is, we received several letters, I think you all have them in your packets here. Just recently, we received a, a letter from the homeowners association president, Forrest Bowling. Is he here by any chance? I know he had a commitment to, well, a appointment, but he was hoping to make it. I take it he's not here, okay. I'm going to read the letter to you so that you'll all have a good understanding of what has happened here. It says, and I'll abbreviate it. "Just thank you for considering other options for the placement of the new dog park for the Sun and Lake community. We continue to be concerned and opposed to the placement of the dog park on Edgewater Drive. I remind you that Edgewater community is an over 55 of age and pet-free community, and we're not welcome the dog park. I've obtained a copy of the board of, of the board discussion documents, which are the documents we'll be discussing right now with some other alternatives, that will be presented in the April 13 supervisors' meeting. The impact of the location of the dog park on each of the locations was not addressed in the discussion letter. The dog park has little negative impact on options A and B, which we'll discuss, and the greatest impact be on the Edgewater Drive location due to the number of resident units on that street. Some of the negative impacts are an increase in traffic on the street, an increase in the noise level from the dogs and the traffic, a decrease in the quality of life on the street due to the loss of lake views, which will be blocked for some of the residents, and peaceful surroundings that influence residential purchases, a decrease in the property values, or an increase in the holding period to sell due to adverse influence of the dog, dog park. It appears that option A would be a viable location near the clubhouse slash racquetball club, and option B also would be a, near the clubhouse and racquetball would be welcomed by the Crown Point Assisted Living Facility." Select, section, selection of option three, which is the Edgewater one, would create a lot of unhappy Edgewater residents and pay a set, and pay assessments to the Sun and Lake. We request that you review options A, B, and C. So that's the letter from Mr. Bowling. Is there anybody else here from the, that condo association representing? Okay, we had some additional letters. There were really just a few people confirming what Forrest had written in this letter. They just wholeheartedly agreed with it. So we have five couples that also concurred with this document. I wanted to make this somewhat brief, but I think it's important for those people here to understand if they aren't familiar with the background and what has transpired with this dog park. I think, just to give you kind of a, a quick rundown, if I can find my notes here, what transpired was a little bit of the history here. This started, this dog park request started a little over a year ago, in 2017. We reviewed a number of sites that the district owned because that's where we would have to put it. And we looked at a number of different factors, there are safety for the people that would be utilizing that, ease of access, ease of parking, all of those types of things. We advertised multiple times in the public meetings, and we held public meetings here at this particular center, okay? We just did do a, an email blast on the meetings, such as we do every single board of supervisors' meetings. We did a cost analysis and engineering drawings, plus topographical maps. RFPs were issued for it. Proper bidding process, reviews were continued, and a resolution of the public board meeting on January of 2018 was to move forward with the dog park on Edgewater Drive. This board unanimously voted yes to have it there. After that had been passed in April or March, we received some concerns from our community here, and the concerns were from the residents on Edgewater. And the board decided at that time to do something that's totally unusual. They decided to hold back on the resolution that they had already approved and gone forward with to look at alternate locations. We looked at multiple alternate locations, and we came up with, and I don't know how many people have these drawings, we came up with two locations, one by the pickleball tennis courts and one by, on the other side of the pickleball and tennis courts. Okay? The, if placed over in that area, we eliminate our future growth for the additional pickleball, shuffleboard, bocce, and all of the other recreational courts that we were looking to put over there. So I'm speaking only for myself, and it's my recommendation that we continue to go forward with the planned dog park on Edgewater. But I just wanted to give the people the background. Now I'm going to turn it over to the board, and it's up to them. Whomever.
The alternative locations that we considered were to the south of the existing tennis courts and pickleball courts. There's adequate space there. The cost of building it there shouldn't be any different than the cost of building in the Edgewater. The issue with that is, we currently have 550-plus members of the racket facility, so it is, in all likelihood, going to have to be expanded in the foreseeable future, which means at that point we have to pick up and relocate the dog park. The other alternative supervisor Brooks identified was where we took down the temporary maintenance structures on the north side of the racket facility and adjacent to the property line for the assisted living facility on Catalina. There's adequate space there. The cost would probably be somewhat higher because we'd have to do a lot of site preparation, but some of that's offset by the fact that we were going to do site preparation on all of that area, including Blacktop. So we don't have a firm number on the difference. It's probably less than $10,000, I think, if we decide to put it there. At that point, we have parking, we have water available, we could make different fencing arrangements and even have public restrooms available. And I've talked to the people in the assisted living facility, and there's no objection from them whatsoever to having it there. So, in my mind, we really have one viable alternative to the Edgewater location, and that's to the north of the racket facilities.
Okay. Go ahead. Do we have that, do we have a drawing of that, or can we get that up? All right, so I'm, I was working on coming up with a bocce court, a shuffleboard court, an expansion of pickleball for the, in that recreation area, and I was working on the, what is it, the right side, if you're looking at it? What side is that? Where the trees current, where the?
The lakeside?
The lakeside, yes. I was, I was planning on putting it in on the lakeside, and I don't know if we can get it up, show you the diagram. But I'm looking at an expansion of two more, two additional pickleball courts, which I think we don't need now, but down the road, I'm anticipating that we would need those. I was looking to put in somewhere between six to eight, possibly 10 shuffleboard courts, and putting in, where's Drew, four, bocce, what's it called?
Petong?
Petong, which is a version of bocce ball, courts in as well. And really, we went over to, to be honest with you, this whole thing started looking at Tanglewood. I went over to Tanglewood, and I saw the facilities that they had, and to be honest with you, we're basically copying what they had as far as quality and layout and that type of thing. And while we were there, we saw that they were pretty busy. They weren't busy until 10 o'clock, and 10 o'clock, they all came out and attacked the courts, so apparently they had leaves and everything. But we think, I think, and hopefully you all would agree, that expanding the offerings of Sun and Lake is critically important in trying to attract people to come here. Plus, people who live here already don't always just play golf, or fish. There are other things that they probably would like to do if they were offered to them. So we do have the room to do it, but it is on the lakeside part of the facility right now, where the tennis courts are. Which brought me to the dog park. The dog park, I, I walked, I walked the area where the temporary shed was, on the opposite side of the tennis courts, and it's about 34,500 square feet compared to what we were looking at at Edgewater, which was 34,537 feet. So it's comparable in size. And as Joe mentioned, he went over to Crown Point and asked if they would have any objections to it, and they said no, they would be fine with it. So theoretically, if we were to put it in there, there's nobody that I can think of that would object to it, and yet we would get our dog park. Now, the last thing, because obviously there's an expense involved, the addition, the recreational addition, right now has initially been priced addition, right now has initially been priced at something like three hundred and ninety-four thousand. And the dog park is somewhere in the area of, I was gonna guess, probably forty or fifty thousand, 'cause we have to do concrete work, and maybe thirty-five thousand, but whatever the cost may be.
Thirty-five, thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand. There is available to us, I'm gonna need your help, a Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee of Highlands County has funding available for recreational, uh, recreational costs that may be submitted to them to improve, be it Sun and Lake, or Highlands Ridge, or what have you. And their budget, I think they meet, well, if you could help me on this now.
The RPAC committee meets quarterly, and they receive applications from different, different government entities, whether it's the city of Sebring, Lake Placid, Spring Lake, and they make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners for the application that was submitted by the government. So the county receives, this committee is a county committee, and the dollars that they receive on a yearly basis is restricted just for recreational amenities in Highlands County.
Right.
So that is money that we can tap into for our recreation, as long as it's open to the public.
Right. And the dog park could be considered recreational, so if you take the dog park cost, and you take the cost for the bocce ball, shuffleboard, and expansion over there, and you put that all together, we could get reimbursed from, up to the whole thing. Is that correct? I shouldn't say that. Possibly the whole thing, we don't know. We're guessing, I don't know if I should say, no, we're just, we, we think we could do very well if we do make the application, and the cost to Sun and Lake would be very little, and yet we would get shuffleboard, bocce ball court, dog park, the whole bit. So that's what I would suggest that we take the, uh, take the approach to. I think we go and cost it out correctly, make the application to the county, see what the county says, and go from there. No? Help me. Is that all right?
Yes.
So RPAC, if we go with RPAC, we open up all of our facilities to the public at that point. Can we charge them membership fees to get in there, or does it become now?
We do that now. We do that now.
If we take, if we take RPAC money, okay? The question is, we take the RPAC money, and it's open to the public, long as we can continue to charge them membership fees to get in there and play bocce ball and tennis and pickleball and all of that?
Correct.
Okay.
The only problem, I guess, would be in people's mind, the dog park. And the dog park, quite honestly, if there's any objection to, I mean, nobody's gonna bring their dog five miles to go walk them in our Sun and Lake dog park, I don't believe. So it would be open to the public, though. There could be somebody driving twenty minutes or thirty minutes with their dog to come walk into our dog park. That is a possibility, but I think it's worth the gamble.
But that's gonna be the case, whether we get county funding or not, because it's still public money, is that not true?
No. If you don't take RPAC money, it's not open to the public.
If we, if we take, if we utilize RPAC funding, it has to be open to countywide residents. If we utilize just Sun and Lake assessments, we have the ability to restrict the dog park or--
Okay. All right, I didn't understand that, that's fine.
If we so wish.
Plus, I think restricting the dog park would be very difficult to do anyway. I don't know how you do that. We're not gonna hire somebody to stand there and check their IDs.
That'd be your job.
Very good.
When I get off the board, I'll do that.
I do have, I do have a question, and maybe you can help me with this, because I'm sure you examined it. Going down, uh, Ponce de Leon, and we have a number of residents over in that area, and that whole unit over there, in fact, many of them are golfers, many of them aren't, and currently, one of the ways they get through to Sun and Lake Golf Course, instead of driving down Ponce de Leon, crossing Sun and Lake's Boulevard, driving up Sun and Lake's Boulevard, going around the turnabout or the roundabout, depends what state you're from, um, and so there's a, a little bit of a safety fact, by putting a fence up for a dog park there, I believe, and I believe, and I was looking at the topos that, uh, had been put together, it might inhibit people or infringe upon them getting through that area. And in fact, I've had people from the residents here even ask me if there was a way we, they could actually pave it coming through there, and, uh, so that's just another thought, another thought, of all of those people over on, on that unit, so, but I don't know what the future will bring.
Yeah, I saw that as well. I guess, if I looked at the drawing of option C, first of all, I don't think option B is, I think that's a no-starter, because we're gonna need to, closer to, closer to the lake is gonna be needed for other usage later, which is in essence what you're saying, right?
Right.
So the, the only two options to me are Edgewater and option C, which is close to Crown Point, but if I looked at it right, we're gonna lose fourteen parking spaces there?
Yes.
Yeah. So we're talking about almost doubling the cost, plus losing parking spaces.
Yeah, I looked at that, you know, I thought about that too, but how many times use you this parking lot full?
When we have the big, uh, high school tournaments, those, those things.
All right, so how many times a year is that?
Couple.
Well, if you increase--
I think you have to weigh, plus, there is additional places you can put parking where, where, and I'm gonna say this incorrectly, where the, uh, the storage shed is for the carts, the fleet, where we meet for Dougie Co's group, for example, all that grass could be converted into a parking lot down the road, if indeed we thought we were short parking places.
Mr. Blain, so we don't have a budget right now for all of the pickleball and the tennis and--
No, I think we have a budget just for the dog park of what, fifteen thousand?
What they're saying, we don't have a budget for that.
Right.
And I'm, I'm probably misunderstood you, so are you suggesting that we wait when we get a budget for the pickleball and the tennis and the bocce and, and all of that other information, and hold off on the dog park until that time, so if we, in the event, go for RPAC money, it'll be all lumped together, or are you suggesting that we do those as separate projects?
No, I'm suggesting we do it all at once.
Okay, so we don't even have a budget for the bocce and all of those other things, which I think came in somewhere around close to four hundred thousand, correct?
Correct. Uh, Mr. Brooks was gonna present that during the capital planning. He's gonna present to you some drawings that, that our engineers put together.
Okay, but we are at a point--
We do not have it in the budget.
We are at a point right now where we have something on the books, we either get it up, we make a decision that we cancel the project for now on the dog park, or we make a decision to move forward with it at one of those three locations. It sounds like one of the locations clearly doesn't make sense, and that would be where you're looking to put the additional tennis courts, pickleball courts, and so on. So it leaves two locations, the one, one over here, or the one at the parking lot.
If I may, if I may, either way, we can't build the dog park and then go request money, correct?
Yes, we can.
Can we do it that way?
Mm-hmm.
So we can build it and then go ask for the money?
Yes.
We can ask later on.
Or during, during the budget process, once it's budgeted, and we can do that. I mean, typically, it would be beneficial to do the application prior to construction or prior to the installation started. I mean, that would be ideally. RPAC meets quarterly, if they don't have any funding requests, they won't even meet at all. So ideally, it'd be nice to go to RPAC prior to--
And what, what is their next meeting? Do you know?
May seventeenth.
May seventeenth?
May seventeenth.
Do we have a representative for that, beside you? Was it, was it--
It was Tenille on--
It was Tenille before, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Could we pull this together by then?
By May seventeenth?
Yeah.
We don't have in, in our budget, though, we don't have the, the new pickleball and bocce and all that.
That's for next year's budget.
I mean, they, they wanna be able to see that we, we have a, we've approved the actual project before we do the application process.
We, we really haven't asked the people who live here, do you really want--
We have not.
--shuffleboard, or whatever, petong, or whatever it was you were talking about. You know, I don't, I don't know that, I mean, there may be a lot of people want, maybe a lot of people don't, I don't know. I thought the no, dog park was a no-brainer, too, but--
Does it have to be in a package deal? Can you go and ask for reimbursement for the dog park now and do whatever you have to do down the road?
Dog park can be separate.
Yeah. I mean, I guess that would be--
Well, a lot of this is speculation out. Aren't we gonna decide whether we're gonna do it or not? I mean, we're sitting here talking about the same stuff I voted on nine months ago to go, go ahead and go away with.
Everybody on this board voted for it, but, you know--
I mean, I, my comment is, let's vote and, and decide, you know, where we're gonna put it. I mean, why keep--
I, I totally agree. I, I think we're-- This is, this is a small line item, uh, and, and I think it's, it's appropriate that we did, in fact, revisit this. It's, it's right for the community, it's right for the people that live over there. Uh, I, I just, you know, we've delayed so much on this, we've looked at alternatives, we spent a lot more money, we've got engineering involved in this. This is not a thirty thousand dollar project, this is growing and growing and growing. Our engineering services, no, no offense to Paulston, but they keep going out there and doing drawings. Uh, you know, we need to come up with something, uh, so I would like to see today a decision made on this, we either go with it, or we don't go with it. If we go with it, we will make a decision of where we want to put it. It sounds like we have two options right now on the table, and say which one we're gonna go with, um, and get it over with, and that's my comment. Public comments?
Molly Murner from the Preserves, I've never heard of, do we need one? Why do we need a dog park? I had a dog for over fifteen years over here, I never thought about a dog park, I never needed one. We've got eight people down our street that have dogs, they don't care about one, they wouldn't use one. Do we really need a dog park? What's it gonna do for us?
There's a million reasons why I could respond to--
Tom Costy, Manor Hill. Um, I have to admit that I signed the petition for a dog park in Sun and Lake, I thought it would be a good idea. Um, however, I heard the comment earlier that we did a e-blast, letting everybody in the community know that this was on the agenda this past summer, last in twenty seventeen. Uh, the district e-blast list consists of something like maybe eleven hundred good email addresses out of the seven thousand or so taxpaying property owners in Sun and Lake who did not get informed. A, uh, the tax bill went out, there was no mention in the tax bill, but last fall, about the dog park, there was no general mailing to the entire roster of property owners in the district about this thing being under consideration. The people who are objecting to it are the people who are most affected, and nobody's here is affected in any way, because you folks won't have to put up with it. I don't see the rush to judgment on this thing. The other point I'd just like to make, and I've made this point before, and it was under John McClure when he was still, and by the way, we're still writing checks to John McClure at Budley. We're paying John McClure over a hundred grand a year to render his opinions on this stuff. But he did confirm that the chairperson of a meeting, under Roberts' rules, which most government meetings are conducted under, is supposed to be the last person to render an opinion on anything that's up for discussion, and that's not the way this has been going. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I stand corrected on multiple areas.
George Puffenberger, resident, you remember, I spoke at the last meeting about him in favor of the dog park. I'm ambivalent, actually. My biggest, uh, concern was, and it still is, but not one that would swing my vote either way, if I was to vote, the, uh, land across from Edgewater, is that our land, or is that county land?
It's ours.
Ours, and it's C three, is that the designation?
R three.
R three.
R three. Is there a height limit on that?
No, there isn't. You could put, put two-story buildings--
Only point is, with Ray Horning starting the condos or triplex down on the corner, the east side, the best piece of territory in this district is the land right across the Edgewater. That's a beautiful spot, and I suspect what you see, Ray Horning, is only the beginning of what's gonna happen. So if you decide to put the dog park there, which I have no objection to, it doesn't block anybody's view, it's not gonna increase traffic, you're gonna have to move it if somebody buys the land. That's the only consideration I would think about. Thank you.
Javita McKinney, very new resident, but I am such a high proponent of dog parks, I wanted to speak. I've always had dogs, I love dogs, and they're, it's safe for the dog, it's safe for the people in the neighborhood. It's just a good thing to have, um, and if you never take your dog there, there will be one day that day, like he was saying, you're going by there and your dog is like, ah, and you, you'll get out the car and take a minute. If you've ever used a dog park, you'll see the benefit, uh, for your dog, 'cause a lot of the backyards, now, I live somewhere where my yard is small, I don't know about everybody else, if I, and we don't have a dog because of the size of our yard. We love dogs, we didn't get one, 'cause even if we fence it in, it's like still cooping the dog. So dog parks, I don't know, I've just seen the benefit for the animal. And this is another last thing, and I'll shut up, when you're walking your dog and all that, you know, if I ride bike by a person walking their dog, if I'm walking by someone walking their dog, you see the issue? A dog park, it's like, if you wanna be by dogs, they're there. And then this way, the people or the residents that love dogs like I do, they have somewhere to take their dog to get a good run, meet other dogs, not that the dogs probably care, but, you know what I'm saying? I, I'm just a proponent, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Nicole Banich, um, uh, I don't really mind one way or another about the dog park, I, as you know, walk the dog, my dog everywhere, but the, I'm just curious to know, and I'm new to this, so please help me along, um, but what about all the land that's on the other side, you know, Cortez, uh, there's, it's all uninhabited, it's, you know, there's nobody around there, and does the, do we own, Sun and Lake, does, do they own that property? No? Is it privately owned?
One of, one of the things that, and maybe some of the competitors, one of the things that we looked at was not only available land, we didn't wanna have land up in, in the north forty, because we were concerned about the safety for the patrons, okay? You don't really wanna be out in an area where they might be--
No, I, and I'm, and I'm not thinking that we should go to the back forty, I was just wondering if, A, you, you already own the land, and if so, that would be fine, but just, so, I can understand the people on Edgewater not wanting to have a dog park on, in front of them, but I also understand the fact that, um, the, what, uh, I think Tom Costy or, or George Puffenberger said about, you know, building, uh, going on, so, but it's just, I wondered, uh, about the, um, about if you own that land and, and if it could be, the dog park could be--
I think the biggest issue in, in that area was cost, because there's no parking, there's no water, um, so all of that would have to be created, and you, you wouldn't do it for the fifteen thousand dollars that we're talking about.
Terry Austin, uh, I'm obviously a very strong supporter of a dog park, um, but I would like to make one comment, uh, based on both locations that you're looking at. My belief, and that's from visiting numerous dog parks, again, mainly in Canada, the size that we're looking at, I believe is far too small for, to create a real dog park, and I think what you have to look at is what do you actually need in a dog park? What Edgewater has is what a dog park should have, I'm not saying that's where it has to be, I'm just saying what they have. You've got the trees there for the dogs to run, uh, your benches that you can put in there, you've got the shade for the warmer part of the day for the dogs and for the people with their dogs. Um, that area, or that type of area, is very, very good, but I think what you need to look at is the size of what you're looking at. When I looked at what is staked off over on Edgewater, I believe it's way too small for, to make it a real viable and, uh, a dog park where people want to go.
Thank you. Thanks, Terry.
Agnes Snowball, resident, as you've heard before, I've been at these meetings, I'm on Edgewater Drive, I'm not happy about it at all. The whole idea of having a dog park in such a, in that community is to- totally out of-- It just doesn't make any sense. There must be other places that you can have it. You're saying that it's too far away, that other area the lady was talking about. It maybe is a bit further away, but is that not... You can make it as big or as small as you want. Why do you need to have parking? You know, I mean, it's not going to cause any problems if it's somewhere that's a bit more away from next to residences. That's the biggest problem. But I have here, it's a study that was done of dog parks in other areas of America, and it says that it has brought down the prices of the houses in that area. It leaves the grass completely bare, especially in this area where it's such sandy soil. And when the winds get up, it starts to move the soil. It's big areas because of the dogs being in it constantly and what they do there. It just, it ruins the soil. So what you're doing is you're putting a dog park in a lovely area of Edgewater where it's trees, grass, nice to look at. Even condos won't make the smell and the mess that a dog park will make.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay. I guess we have two options here, based on what I'm hearing the board say, as well as what the participants in the community are saying. We're still down to a location either over at, by the pickleball courts, or the location on Edgewater. I'm not quite sure exactly how to proceed with this. I guess we could, we could say that, maybe we could just take a general consensus as to what, do away with the dog park completely. Could we do that, David?
Well, I mean, we, right now, the, from the previous meeting, there was a motion and a vote to direct the general manager to, before any contracts were executed, to bring it back before the board. So if it's the two, you know, if we're looking at two different potential locations, arguably, what we could do is we could have, you know, get a proposal for each location, and the board could vote on either location A or location B, as of which, where they wanted it located. But since it's not on the action agenda today, you know, we need, if we're going to, if you want to... My recommendation would be to put it on the action agenda, as if we're going to make a, you know, have a resolution, and it's going to either go in A or B. Or if you want to take a general consensus vote now, is say, you know, no, we're not going to move forward with the dog park until we've talked to RPAC or, you know, whatever, you know...
Can we do a general consensus on... Because if you say A, B, or C, for an example, you say, "Let's do a general consensus on B." If you get a three to two, can you then say, "Let's do a general consensus on C"? If you get a, you know, depending how it works?
Well, it's because none of that's been, none of that, today, this is just a discussion item. So, I mean, if you want to, us to move forward with, you know, getting prices, you know, we can... I think that would be the easiest way to do it, is we've got three locations. If we, if we, if it's, if the general consensus is that location A is not feasible, based on the planned expansion of the racket park area, then I would say, "Go get a price on location A," or, I mean, option B and option C, and we bring it to the board as a, in the form of a, you know, proposal to...
It has to be on the action agenda before we can vote. So it seemed to me we could come back with, "Do we do a dog park?" is one. If we do that, do we do it on Edgewater, or do we do it...
And I'd say that could all be part of the same, of the same action item next, at the next meeting, is the first vote would be, "Are we going to move forward?" And if we're going to move forward, then the vote would be, is location A or location B?
David, can't we just vote if we do away with what we put on the restriction for Tanya? Do away with that?
We have a resolution.
Since it's already been approved, so I don't even know...
That's true. I mean, there's the...
So if we remove that, then we have a dog park on Edgewater?
That'd be correct.
So what do we have to do to remove the restriction? Take a general consensus?
No, somebody make a motion and vote on it.
I'm lost. I think we're going to decide today what the hell we're doing. What the heck we're doing.
We are. We're trying to. We are trying to.
Correct. The, there's a standing restriction that any, that because of the already approved resolution has been restrictive in that. Before, there were, the Tanya was supposed to bring back any contract before she executes it, to put the dog park on Edgewater. So if you're going to vote now to remove that restriction...
It's got to go on Edgewater.
It would be going on Edgewater.
Okay. Kirsty, want to take a...
You need, but we need a motion.
I'm sorry. So we're going to vote to remove the restriction?
You don't have to vote on anything. What I'm saying is that, if you want to, if there's, if you want something to be resolved today, the only potential resolution is to vote...
I thought we, I thought we had, we already agreed to do a dog park, and today we're going to decide if it's A, B, or C.
No.
No? Too easy.
We put a restriction on Tanya, I believe it was last meeting, saying we held back on a resolution that we approved.
The resolution's already been approved.
The resolution was...
To put the dog park on Edgewater. Last meeting, Tanya was restricted before she executes a contract. She used to bring that contract before the board.
So we're going to have to revisit this next meeting?
No, not if you vote to remove that restriction.
So if we remove the restriction, it has to go on Edgewater?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to remove the restriction.
Motion on the table.
Second.
Just a motion and a second.
Discussion. Yeah?
So that mean, if we vote yes, it's going to Edgewater?
If they, if you remove the restriction, the resolution becomes effective, and Tanya can go forward with the contract, correct, David?
Correct.
We're speaking of fencing. Fencing is scheduled for May 15.
May 15.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion on the table now. Any further discussion? Kirsty?
Are we going to go back to public comment?
Sorry about that. Public comment.
Could we be told exactly what this restriction, and does that mean it's, that's it? Edgewater's going to have this. Is that it?
Yes. If we remove the restriction, that gives...
Regardless of what we feel or anything that's happened, you are doing it anyway?
I'm not doing it. I think the whole board is doing it.
Well, the whole board is doing it?
Yes.
Regardless of how the residents feel?
I'm only one vote, and I appreciate it, and I understand exactly where you're coming from.
This is not good.
We spent a year on this, and the first time we heard it, about it, any comment was after it had been approved and brought forward.
But it was buried. It was buried. It wasn't, it wasn't straight up, and we didn't know about it. And since we have known about it, it should have been taken into consideration, surely.
Thank you.
Tom Costy, Manor Hill. The original restrictions that were filed for the development of Sunning Lake indicates that all properties that are platted on a certain book and page number are subject to certain restrictions, and I believe the maximum fence height for that entire plat is four and a half feet. Does this comply with that? So those are recorded restrictions that are applicable to all residential properties in Sunning Lake that were platted. Is this worth looking into before you make the final decision today?
I would just change it to four.
Recorded restrictions at the county clerk's office are not your purview. The county has to change those.
We're not going to build anything that's not, doesn't meet with county regulations.
No, we're not going, exactly, that's what he's saying. But I'm saying we could reduce the fencing to a lower height.
Gotcha.
Okay. Before we vote... Oh, I'm sorry.
Because there's dogs, I think the five-foot, all the dog parks I've been to, maybe recheck, I think it's viable. Because if you make that fence lower and the dog jumps over and gets someone, you've got a problem. So the five-foot fence is probably better for the dogs and safety for the owner. And I didn't add the last comment. If you've ever stepped in someone's dog's dog poop in your yard, you will appreciate a dog park, because they can take care of their dog there.
Okay, I just, before we vote... Thank you. Before we vote, so I just want to just summarize this from my standpoint. Edgewater, people don't want it, even though they were late on the getting to us. They definitely don't want it. Their justification is weak at best, but they don't want it. There's concerns over the size of the dog park, whether it's too big or too small. The, I think it's important to expand the recreational thing, which would eliminate by the pickleball courts. So that leaves us with the one area by the parking lot, which nobody has complained about yet, that I've heard of. And I don't know why, to make everybody as happy as possible, we wouldn't consider that, because nobody's going to be able to, or nobody so far has complained about it. So I just want everybody, before they vote, to think about that. That's all.
So basically, just so everybody's clear, a no, a yes vote means that the restriction is lifted, and the, and the contract will be executed to put the park on Edgewater. And a no vote means it is, it remains on hold.
Are we okay with the five foot, or it's got to go in at the maximum height allowed by the county?
My understanding is that that's already been discussed with the county, through, Drew's already discussed it with the county. But we'll double check on all that.
Well, that's the other thing. In the parking lot, we can put fences tall as we want, because we already had a tall fence in there once upon a time.
No more public comment? Okay, Kirsty?
Supervisor Gilton?
Yes.
Supervisor Steeple?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
No.
Supervisor Brooks?
No.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Yes.
There are no add-on items? No, sir. And the petitions and communications were already addressed.
Covered those.
Yes, sir.
Staff reports? Michael?
Sure. Ron Waterling with Billy Casper Golf. Last, last board meeting, I mentioned, we're, you know, going through the process for trying to interview various candidates for the GM position of the golf club. We've had two candidates that all of you have had a chance to spend some time with. A third, you know, came as early as yesterday. Two board members have had a chance to spend some time. The other three board members that have not had a chance to meet the third candidate. I will be scheduling that last interview with you later today. We anticipate, you know, probably having it filled within the next, you know, let's say, four weeks. The three candidates all have jobs, so one gets selected, given proper notice. And, but all three candidates have been, spent a lot of time with, very qualified. So look forward to hearing more, give an update at the next board meeting for the, for the audience and board. Outside of that, you know, we had a good march. Going into April, as Northerner starts to head north, we'll start to decrease some of the staffing levels and kind of go into our summer mode. Grass is growing rapidly as temperatures increase. I know we'll talk about some, you know, capital items here later in the agenda, which is a big part of it. But from just operational update, we had a, we had a good season and looking forward to another good month.
Thanks, Ron. Michael left. I guess he doesn't have anything? Omar? You have anything? Oh, I saw you coming up there. Okay. I'm missing him. Gosh. We'll move on to the general counsel at this moment, and then we'll come back to Michael, if he has anything to add.
Not a lot to discuss right now. The, you know, the foreclosure litigation report will come at the next board meeting. There has been some motion on Ayala regarding potential settlements, and we hope to have something to bring to the board to finalize it at the next board meeting.
Thanks, Ron. Michael, do you have any staff reports?
No.
No? Okay. General managers' report?
I do have one thing, the drainage. They're about 75% done. They're on Metanis. I mean, Metanis is almost done, except for the add-on and Menorca. Hopefully, they'll be finishing up within the next couple of days. They did close the road for a few days, because they had away from materials, but they've done a pretty good job of where they are right now. So, and I'm real happy with that. Hopefully, it'll be done before the rainy season.
Thank you.
Mike, I got one question. Let me preface this by saying I have no drainage issues whatsoever where I live, but to the north of me, there were folks who came to the meeting and got our attention, and we made commitments to do something there?
Were actually looking to get a price to do in front of her house and across the road with drainage there. So we're in a process. Actually, Drew and I went out there yesterday and looked at it.
Okay. So it will be done before the rainy season? I mean, it's kind of what we told them.
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, we're trying to get there, but, you know.
Mike, if you don't get to them, I think maybe we need to talk to them and say, "We're a little behind" or something, just so they don't, you know...
We owe them at least that, I think.
We, you know, just tell them we're working on it, and...
And we're going to try to do some work in-house out there also, so at least you'll see we're trying to do something.
All right. That's fine. Thank you.
General managers' report?
I have scheduled a meeting with Highlands County with myself and Mark Camp to discuss land use regulations and zoning on May 16th, so we'll be meeting with county officials at that time. The district has received our first no against the, or for, I should say, against the Pebble Beach road extension. So we do have a lot owner that has represented that they have no interest in seeing that road extension with special assessments for their property. We have a deadline of April 15th for the remaining lot owner, so when we have a final consensus, we'll let you know what that is. But that first no, I mean, we've said...
Yeah, that basically takes us out as the, we were just required unanimous consent in order to skip some of the requirements. And so since we don't have unanimous consent, if we want to move forward, it's going to have, there's some additional, not additional, but we're going to be required to comply with all the, the notice requirements and hearing requirements that we could have potentially avoided had we had unanimous consent.
If we don't hear from them by April 15th, is that automatically a yes? Or what is that?
No, unfortunately, no.
Well, what do we do? Have to just...
I'd say the fact that we've gotten a no means that we're going to have to look...
Well, yeah, but I meant the other ones.
The other ones are outstanding that you kind of put a deadline on the 15th.
Yeah, and if we don't have a, they say unanimous consent means they would have had to consented to it. And if they haven't consented, we can't, you know, we can't assume their, you know, their silence is a yes. We have to assume it as a no. But it's really immaterial, because we've already received a verified no. So if we want to move forward, then we're going to have to comply with all the notice requirements.
And we can move forward with the public hearing then, sometime soon.
This was a no to that $18,000 of completing the street?
As an individual assessment, one lot, assessment of $18,000 for the one lot.
And there's what, 20-some that said yes, or the one guy? How many is it? Is the one guy?
23, I think.
23?
I think.
So we got 23, 23 yeses and one no so far. Okay.
Several weeks ago, our Sunning Lake staff, county staff, and some of our BCG staff attended a Dale Carnegie training for two half-days. We had a great turnout. Thank you, Omar, for coordinating that. We had 25 individuals that participated in that event. And lastly, the county administrator and some of his staff visited Sunning Lake on April 5th to discuss our needs and how we can assist each other in the future in the event of natural disasters. That was a very well-represented visit, and that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm finishing business?
None.
New business?
No.
Committee reports?
No committee reports.
Public comment?
I'm muted this stuff here. Nicole Vannage again. The thing, what I'd like to know is who's in charge of fixing the roads in Sunland Lake?
Mike Curley.
Mike Curley, okay. All right, Mike Curley, this is to you. There is a problem with the road which, from Ortega to Schumacher or Schumacher to Ortega, when you want to make the turn. That is just in a shocking mess because the tires go into a hole and so on. And then there's another huge problem as well from Granada onto Alito. And they're, again, making a right onto Alito. So, I mean, I was thinking that maybe in the summertime, when there is less traffic, that this could be addressed and that these roads could be fixed because it, it can ruin tires. So that's, that's basically my thing. The second thing is, this is not addressed to you now, Mike, but the second thing is, is it, Sunland Lake gives permits, building permits, to whomever, to these people who are like Hornick, for instance, because he seems to be at the corner there and building something that's a little different from the rest of what has been built. So is it a Sunland Lake that also gives building permits? Ripping down forests?
That's Highlands County.
Highlands County does that.
Who is the county? So that they can rip through forests and then build monstrosities?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
My name is Carmen Rivera. I am here with my husband Gilbert Rivera. We live in Zambrana Street, and we would like to buy the lot next to our house, which is one of the seven lots for sale by the Highlands County. It came to our attention that there is a debt, assessment debt for 2015, which, when I look into the papers, I see that the debt before from 1993 to 2014 was written off by the transition where it was, it belonged to private owners to the Highlands County Board of County Commissioners. So I believe that, that 2015 invoicing or assessment invoicing came up from automatic recurrent invoicing and stayed there and is getting interest and penalties because it's not being paid. When I also look into the papers, I see that those lots have an improvement code 900, which is lots tax exempt. So, the problem is, I am in the process of bidding for that property, but then there's a debt. That might be a deal breaker for me or other six people wanting to buy those lots. Those lots are not generating any income to the county or the district. We might be losing assessment money from faithful taxpayer, and all I hear here is that we need money for budget for new projects. So, I am providing this information to you and respectfully request to review that debt and maybe write it off, so by the time that closing comes, where the Highlands County pass that property to private owners, it will be free of debt.
Have you had a conversation, is this assessments or what?
We're aware.
Yeah, let me talk.
You're aware of it? Okay. Because I just want to make sure it's being addressed.
Yeah, we're, we're checking into it. Basically, what happened is before, there was 1,100 lots that were sheeting to the county. Before those lots is cheated, the 2015 assessments were put on the books and applied to those, to those lots.
After they were sheeted, they went through these.
Hadn't gone through yet.
Yeah, they did. They had gone through.
They didn't have ordinance in place.
Exactly. After, there, an ordinance was created when they, the first group of lots first started is cheating to the county. That basically said that once a lot is cheated to the county, that it does not, assessments no longer accrue on it. But this was in that gap that that happened. So we're, I'm investigating to find out if there's any way to go back and remove those assessments because I, as I've always discussed and Mr. McClure has always said, once those assessments are on the books, they're on the books, and there's no way to, you know, just remove them. It'd be like just saying someone after the fact is tax exempt, you can't just, you can't remove them from the rolls. So we're going back and see if there's any way to do that, but to my knowledge, there isn't. We're also going to be talking to the county potentially because arguably, there's something that the county could do. Obviously, the county has the majority of the power, and they could conceivably go back and make that erector actively applicable ordinance, and that would make those is cheated lots, or it would remove that, those already assessed assessments from the, from the books. So we're looking into it because there's, like I said, there's 1,100 lots that it applies to.
So, just confirm, so she's actually working with you guys right now to do this, go through this process?
No, I'd say that unfortunately, they say the way that the county, based on my review of the county's bid packet, is they will be transferring the, the property to the bid winners by county deed. And a county deed is basically a quick lane deed. So any of the, the outstanding assessments would still be due and payable.
Is that one year's assessment?
It's one, it's the 2015 assessments. Everything since then has, has not been attached, has not attached to the property.
Yeah, but the assessments from 1993 to 2014 were written off. So that means that the county had already worked with the district at that point, at 2014, to clean everything so they could take it as tax exempt and free of debt. But the thing is that this is 2015, which I believe in that gap that you mentioned, which I agree, from the accounting point of view, recurrent, maybe automatic billing came up, and then that debt came up.
That's the standard assessments. It's our annual assessments that's out.
Correct. So if you think about it, I mean, it came up, it's like when you pay a bill and it delayed in the, in the mail, but then the company charged you for interest because you didn't get there on time, and then you can probably negotiate with them and say, hey, listen, write that off because, I mean, this is in the mail, whatever. So, I mean, this is the situation, but the thing is, these lots are dead there, nothing happening with them, not generating any income, not either to the county or the district. And faithful taxpayers can come up and pay their dues, you know, and their assessment, you will have more income. There are 1,100 lots out there that will be generating over $600 every month, every year for you guys and for the county.
Is, how much, how much are we talking about?
Six hundred.
$499.
$499. An improved lot.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that we're all in agreement that we would do that if we could. We're going to direct him, and he's already working on figuring out how to get it done.
And then, this is for Mike. There's a pine tree leaning towards a road on Altera, and every time that it rains a lot and there's more wind, it's leaning and leaning more and more. That's my way through my house. I mean, every time I pass by, I, I'm kind of afraid that that tree might hit my car. And also, on Zambrana, there is a tree leaning towards power lines. It's not touching yet, but it's leaning. I mean, if it gets there, it will cut the power for all the people in my neighborhood.
Mike, are you familiar with those locations?
Thank you so much.
My only thought, David, is it's kind of unfair that they're going to do this to us on 1,100 lots, and they're getting their money back, the county, by selling them. I mean, and we're going to deal with this 1,100 times. So, we need to get something done or at least ask the county to put $499 on the, extra on the sale so people don't know it, but it's, they're going to get their money and we're going to get stuck writing it off.
Well, I mean, that's the, we, we're going to look into it if it's possible, but I think that's, in my opinion, the, the, the issue is that it's not clear in the bid documents as to, you know, that they're going, that they, they need to understand that they're going to be responsible for paying that $499 to the district. It is not part of their bid amount.
Right, right.
We wouldn't normally have expected to get that $499 since they were being is cheated anyway, right? So, I mean, it's not like we're losing 500 bucks a time, it's just how to cure it. I don't know, if you can't work it that way, is it possible we could have a, a motion that we just forgive those?
I don't know. That's, that's what we've got to check into. I don't know that we have the, the power to do that.
Because we're not going to get it. We're going to have some awful unhappy people when we try to get it.
But if they make it part of the, the sale.
Well, we've talked to the county in trying to do that. The problem is, those lots are assessed at 2,000, and the county bid's starting at 1,800. There's no, there's not a lot of wiggle room there, and it cost the county almost $2,000 just to get it through this process.
Right.
There's not a lot of wiggle room there for extra.
But it makes us look like the bad guys, and they're getting, the county's getting their money, and we're sitting here going, well, it just somehow we got to work it out.
Tom Coste for the last time today and maybe forever. The, one of the things we should keep, I think we definitely need to keep in mind is the fact that this issue about paying back taxes or forgiving taxes, and by the way, assessments are taxes, they're, they're called non-ad valorem taxes. That's, that's something that's been already discussed in court proceedings with regard to Sunland Lake and properties that got to be really sticky between NRPI and a former board and people of the community who went to court to stop a forgiveness of taxes. That NRPI ended up, they ended up going ahead and paying all the back taxes. They are still a property owner here, by the way, and I would think that they would have a, a strong objection if somebody's through some quirk, if this board is able to forgive taxes after they, after they were denied, NRPI was denied. Also, there's another firm by the name of Developer Finance Corporation, one of the biggest developer investors in the country. They have title to many pieces of property here in Sunland Lake, probably close to at least 2,000 lots. They acquired those lots by foreclosing on NRPI because of monies that weren't paid to them, so that's, that's all still hanging out there. They're still a, a player in this, and I think they need to be also consulted. The only other thing I wanted to also mention, and I've, I've brought it up before, it's still, you can find it on the district's website, that, in the policy manual, and I believe it's still in the current policy manual that says, I keep hearing the district say that we do not issue building permits. But what our policy says, and I assume it goes back to an agreement between the county and the district, a building permit will not be issued by the county until a driveway permit is issued by the district. That has to happen first. Our policy manual says that a driveway permit will not be issued until either the director of public works or the district engineer has received a full set of plans and specifications on the entire project. Those words are in writing, and they've been in writing ever since the 12 years that I've lived here, and yet we seem to keep ignoring it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
George Puffenberger, resident. Got a question. The vote you took on the dog park, did that also preclude Supervisor Brooks's suggestion on the bocce ball court? Is that not going to happen now?
No.
No?
No.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, Supervisor Brooks, building those facilities.
Very good.
Any other thing? I don't think, in my opinion, having been here 24 years and dealt with our pack before, I don't believe they're going to give us any money for a dog park. My opinion only.
Thanks, George.
Bill Norcross, resident. I'm glad I don't have a, a dog in that race on the dog park, but probably has to think about the other animals, too. Want to be really ridiculous about it. Somebody may call Peter and say, where's my cat park? Where's my squirrel park? You got it? So that's where that goes. But at least the decision has been made to have it done on Edgewater, I guess. I just hope that the fencing is not very obvious to blend into with the neighborhood like a black fence, not obvious, white fence, which may be ridiculous. Well, the more serious part of the discussion here is the extension on Pebble Beach. Now, obviously, I live on Pebble Beach, so it's here, fourth house from the cul-de-sac. And I'll tell you what, the traffic, just for that new home being built by Hornick, and they're speeding up and down that street, which is 25 miles an hour, it's 22 feet wide. This morning, I went to the end of the street, and there's some kind of construction, and I could barely get by the line of trucks on Pebble Beach Drive. So my concern is not so much the building, which I think is in a flood plain or wet, wet area, and I just think maybe another plan to divert the traffic away from Pebble Beach. So those 25 house lots can be built that everybody wants to have here. That 25 house lots can be built, but the exit wouldn't be off of Pebble Beach. If, if you can't do that, I tell you what, I ask and I demand that the traffic be restricted at 25 miles an hour. That's all. Because you're only talking about 25 houses, you're talking about another 50 cars going up and down that street, and they speed. It is just absolutely ridiculous. And there's children on that street, you have irrigation or, or what do you call it, gardeners or whatever, and they park their trucks all on that street, and it's very dangerous passing them. So if you go more than 15 miles an hour going by a truck, you could hit somebody and kill somebody. Well, that's what I'm concerned about. Not so concerned about the building up there, it's the traffic because it's out of control here. In Sunland Lake, it's out of control. The Sunland Lake Boulevard is, is just a raceway. So, maybe we could have a little restrictions on the, when they build, that road has to be monitored, it has to have speed bumps or whatever, but I think it's very dangerous. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other further public comment?
Discussion to and from the board? You want to take a five-minute break before we go into the workshop?
When do I do this? Do I have to talk?
We'll take a five-minute break before we go, a recess, I guess.
Do I talk about this now or do I? Just the, the extension. Do that when we come back?
Just do it when we come back, because that will be part of the process.
Okay.
Ray, you have something to present, buddy?
Damn rebels.
Get out of here.
I just canceled my, he told me to cancel. He told me to get this.
I'd like to have him. Ah, Supervisor Brooks' presentation. All right. Nice. Very nice.
We already, I can make this kind of quick because we kind of covered on it already. Basically, and this conversation started well before I was even on the board, about expanding the amenities that Sunland Lake offers. And the conversation was shuffleboard and bocce ball courts, which now have become, I don't remember the name, I keep forgetting the name. What's the name?
Paton.
Something. Smaller versions of bocce ball courts.
Paton.
Paton. Thank you. The original intent done was to like put in one or two courts and call it a day and see how it went and then take it from there. When I got wind of that, I decided, well, if we're going to do it, we should take the approach like we did with the pickleball courts, which is if we're going to do it, do it right and be able to offer to people coming to Sunland Lake or who already live in Sunland Lake, something other than golf and use of the pool and tennis courts, et cetera. The more I feel that we can offer, the better off as a community we are in trying to attract people and trying to make everybody who's already here active and happy. So, we looked at the site where the existing pickleball courts are and there is actually room to put in somewhere between eight to 12 shuffleboard courts and two more pickleball courts and then put in what I'll call bocce ball courts, a few of those. And again, be able to offer this stuff to, to people outside and inside Sunland Lake. The cost is expensive. It's including lighting, somewhere in the area of $390,000. There would be this RPAC money available to us. To what extent we would get reimbursed, I really can't tell you. We don't know for sure until we actually do the application. But I can tell you, it probably would be somewhere in the area of a minimum of 50% based on historical data that we've been able to find. It's been a long time since Sunland Lake and that's really basically, we did the basketball courts, we'd done several years ago and we did get reimbursement from RPAC money on that. So, all I'm looking for today, because there's just some changes that Drew and I are going to make to the layout, is approval to put this into our capital plan and to consider it for the budget so that we can go forward with getting the proper documentation and the application to the county to see what reimbursement we could get. And the quicker we could do this, the quicker we'll have an answer and hopefully by finalization of our budget for 2019, we'll know one way or the other what's going to happen. And then we can make a final decision as to what we're going to do.
Great. A couple of questions.
Yeah.
If we don't get RPAC, let's say, I'm not getting it, but let's say we don't get RPAC, you, you want a budget for 400,000, correct, or 394?
Uh, yeah, but I would say if we don't get money from RPAC that we would, at that point, probably take it out of the budget.
Okay. So, this would be contingent upon getting funding from RPAC. So, for us to apply to RPAC, we would have to have it on our budget. Does it ha, now, so you're looking to also put it in the 2018-19 budget, correct?
Yes.
So, we would be pulling some 400,000 out of something else potentially? Because we don't have it funded now.
Yeah, potentially, yes. We would have to go on papers doing that, but I think by the, by the finalization of a budget process, we would know exactly what the final cost would be to us based on the RPAC monies. Would that be a fair statement?
I'd like to have it in the budget before we do the application. So, I think the idea is once the final budget is adopted in September, then at the following RPAC meeting, we'll submit an application, if that's the board's decision to do that.
But this is, that's not contingent on, on us doing it, right? I mean, this would be something plus if we did do it. We're not going to turn it down maybe if, if we don't get this funding.
The board could potentially turn it down. I mean.
No, I meant, yeah, I meant the other, but us doing, moving forward on this doesn't have anything to do with, we're hoping to get that money, but we're not going to hold ourselves up, are we? If we don't get that funding? Because all I'm saying, I'd like, I'd like this done whether we get the money or not.
I'd like to get it done too.
Yeah.
Well, I would too, but I don't know if we could all bite the whole thing off.
Exactly. It isn't stageable.
Yeah, the original way that I priced it out, to be honest with you, was to do it in stages. That was before I realized that there, there was RPAC money available to us because it was a big chunk of coin. There's no question about it. However, if we do have an opportunity to get it perhaps funded almost to, it would cost us very little, I think we'd be foolish not to try it and see what happens.
I just didn't want to hold everything up and.
No, I think if, if, if the RPAC gets back to us and we're not satisfied with the results, then I think if we wanted to stagger it, like I had it originally, we could do that. So, it wouldn't be a $490,000 shot all at once, yeah.
And Tanya, is that, is the money still in the budget for the bocce that we approved?
It was only 10,000 or so.
It was $3,500.
How much?
And it was $3,500.
Okay.
And that was one or two courts, maybe one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The money that was allocated wasn't even close.
I would just, I just wanted to know if we could use that money to help start clearing. That's all I, since it's in the budget, but I guess 3,500.
We do have some money in the budget. In fact, we may have a little bit more than that.
Because I think it'd be a good idea if we could start clearing, clearing that now this year. At least doing something towards it.
We haven't started doing anything towards the bocce courts. We, we, Tanil was given an extra 15,000 going into this year's budget. I don't believe any of that, maybe it hasn't been saved for anything. So, we technically could use the 15 plus the 35 to start something if that's.
I would, I would like us to, to bring that up later or even now. I'd like to use that money to start clearing it if we could. I mean.
The clearing was like 45 grand.
I was going to say it's 45,000 to rep it and mulch it.
If Drew could find a, a section that we could do for, for that, you know, to help.
You got, remember, what you're looking at here is going to change a little bit because when Drew did this, it's going to get lower, actually. When Drew did this, he did it based on stages and plus what we talked about this morning, I'm relocating some pickleball courts and it's different sized fencing. The, the cost of the fencing will probably come down a little bit. Oh, it's up here? Yeah, put that screen back up.
I was just going to comment some on the pricing.
Yeah.
We did price it according to staging and there's some overlapping monies if we did start it and stop it. Like if you were to leave it for a year, you wouldn't want to leave it like sand. You'd want to put some sod down or seed it. And then, once you did that, if you picked it up in a year or two, you'd have to scrape all that back off to continue what you're doing. So, if you did do it all at once, you'd be saving that money. And just clearing the land, if we didn't do that, because I have some fill dirt calculated in there, I, I assume we'd take about two foot of fill to get it where we want it. We wouldn't have to fill it. If we were just clearing at first this year, we wouldn't have necessarily bring in the fill dirt if we didn't have the monies to do it. So, that's some of that bigger cost on that first section.
So, you'd probably recommend that we, we don't do what I just suggested?
No, we can go ahead. If you want to clear like the trees and everything out of there, we can clear that and then maybe do it like a minimal amount of fill. But whenever we go to, like if we, depending on how we proceed, then we can come in with the fill and do everything. But the big, I would suggest we can remove the trees. That wouldn't be a, a huge.
Well, we're leaving it up to the board, but I just wanted to make sure if we had that money, if we could start, if it was convenient, yes. If not, it's okay to do.
Yeah, we could, we could definitely do some of the big stuff, get it out of the way.
So, basically, you're asking us to put it in the potential budget so that we can get the RPAC money?
Yes.
For 2018-19.
Yes.
And that would just go into recreation?
Yes.
Need a motion or you just want to do?
I don't know. We need a motion for that. It's just ask her, she'll rewrite the, the budget for when we do the meeting in May and it will include that 400,000 or 390, whatever it is.
Then I think, I think what Drew and I'll do between now and then is we'll have a different drawing from the one that you guys have with some changes that we'd like to make.
I think the, the pickleball, not pickleball, the bocce ball courts were laid out basically close to the tennis courts.
Yeah, I mean, you have, it was up there a minute ago.
But you really wouldn't want to do that.
What's that?
My point was right, that you really wouldn't want to do that if we're, you would want your pickleball courts all together.
The move, the changes that I'm going to do, if you have your drawings, would be to take the two pickleball courts and put them as an extension to the pickleball that we have now. And take the bocce ball and put it like underneath the shuffleboard and then reposition the shuffleboard a little bit more and, and extend it because there's only six courts of shuffleboard there. We'd probably go to eight to 10.
It does bring to mind a question. I see all these numbers about racket club members. I don't see that many people out there playing, so, I mean, it's like 700 or some kind of number that I got. I'm assuming that includes all the full-time, full membership people who probably never set foot on the tennis court, but they get that as part of their membership.
We have, we have currently 511 members of the racket club. 310 of them are golf members. So, they receive that as part of their.
Okay, so you got 200.
So, 200 non-golf members and then, while we're on the subject, let me give you some more numbers. Pool, 842.
But those 300 are still in that?
Yes. 310 of those are golf members and the fitness, 555 of which the 310 are also part of that fitness.
So, we're kind of pumping up our numbers.
The golfers, yes.
I mean, not that we would do anything like that, but you know.
And there are golfers that also utilize those facilities as well.
But most of us are old and fat, so we don't do that.
That's it? So, I, what do we do now? We just, we don't vote or anything? We just say, "Okay"? Or what do we do?
We were going to put it into the five-year capital plan as we start the budget discussions.
Okay.
Okay.
And Ray, Ray, you and Drew, just, you know, something, if we can do something this year with that money we have, it'd be nice to.
I think it's going to be, the, the money that we have, it's more or less up to Michael whether he has the time and the people to do it.
Well, don't we have to hire that?
I mean, it's smart to clean it now since we have money. Absolutely. It's smart. We also have some fill. Maybe we can use, I'll have to talk to Drew about that, but we may have fill that we're taking from other areas and we may be able to put there. I don't know what his plan is, you know, for bringing the fill in, but we may, may save, save some money that way too. So, I'll talk to him about it.
We also need to build on the golf course though. They've got a couple of issues there.
Okay. If you want to, if you and Earl and I want to go out there, you know, look at that. I mean, fill, I don't know if you could use the fill there. I'll leave that up there.
All right. Good idea to get into the budget. I'm not sure about, you know, clearing the stuff right away until we have a plan. I would, I'd kind of like to see a, a little bit of a plan and rather than have, start to cut down trees and then have an open area and then maybe we say, in the budgeting process, because we've gone through this before, maybe we say, "Well, you know what? We don't see that we can do that in 2018-19, but we can do it in 1920." I mean, we've got to kind of go through that budget process.
Another option that we have is to carry forward the funds that we have currently into the next budget year. We do have that option.
We can roll that over, yeah.
Because you know, we, we don't really want to knock it all down and leave it there because you either got to sod it or not. So, I think that's a better idea.
Can I bring up another question on the dog park?
No.
Are we going to be, no, seriously, are we going to, since we're going ahead with this now, oh, can we apply for RPAC money?
We can.
Okay.
I would, I doubt if you're going to get it for that. You'd be more likely to get it for recreation.
I think it's a pretty small amount.
Yeah, that'd be stretching it.
So, I, I don't have to, but I, I'm saying I can apply.
Why not?
Would we, would we poison the well for future stuff if we go, if we got, if they gave us $15,000 or $5,000, then they're going to look at us, "Well, we gave you something last year, you're not getting this." I mean, are we smart to?
Well, we can do it all at once, that's fine. I mean, I, I don't want to forget that there's money on the table for it. I mean, if the, if the dog park's 30,000.
I'm not going to lie for both of them.
But if the dog park's 30,000 and we can get 20 of it back or something, why not?
The dog park's 15.
The dog park is 15. If we get, if we get 50% of that, seven or $8,000, you kind of have to wait. Does that, we, we have concerns with citizens about traffic, noise and everything else. For $8,000, do we want to invite the outside world to come in here?
You've got to be kidding me.
Hey, I'm with him.
You know, the district, so we're doing the dog park, we're going to close it to the outside public and now you're going to monitor that?
Right. Think about this for a second. Just think about this for a second. We just had a year worth of discussion here.
Yeah.
Okay? The people are concerned about traffic.
Yeah.
They're concerned about allotted dogs. They're concerned about all of this stuff and now you want to open it up to the world?
Who's going to check the IDs? You're going to have a dog with an ID? Come on.
You can put a sign, you can actually put a sign on the fence.
That says one.
Sunland Lake's residents only and you can prosecute them.
Oh, you can prosecute? We're going to.
The only parking we're going to have there, the only additional parking is golf cart parking.
You guys, I'll tell you what, you go for the RPAC, you do whatever you want to do.
Don't do it right.
No, don't do it.
What?
I say no, but you know.
That's fine. Close it down? I mean, close it to the outside. I don't care.
It's a diminutive amount.
$8,000, you know.
It's nothing. We spend money like.
Supervisors, I, I will not plan on, at this time, submitting application for RPAC funds for dog parks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have so much money.
Okay. I believe it would be Ron, Ron Wondleley.
Where would we like to start? Obviously, hold on one second, let me just pull up what.
Can we just say no right off the bat or what?
Say no right off. Okay, are we, are we speaking of the capital or you want to speak to the memo?
Are you asking for more than $8,000?
What's that?
Are you asking for more than $8,000?
No. Obviously, the memo that you're seeing in your board pack, some of the board members reached out to me and we had some one-on-one conversations. As we get into, thank you, as we get into obviously our budget workshops for fiscal 2018-2019, I felt it was important to just, you know, talk about goals. And, and the memo that I stated was, you know, separated in a couple of different buckets in terms of, you know, goals for maintenance, food and beverage, golf operations, you know, marketing goals for the club. And in summary, and I know you've had so many conversations with Earl to the right of me in terms of, you know, we want to elevate the, the property and, you know, trying to define it a little bit. We've, we've made some strides with some improvements out on the golf course, which has been great, but I thought it would be a good opportunity before we build this budget and present it in the near future to just talk about it for a second. So, you know, if we, if we talk about golf course maintenance, the view that we've received is trying to elevate the golf course, I'll use in general terminology, to the next level. Defining what the next level is, you know, sometimes difficult, but, you know, some of the exterior landscaping that we're doing to the scrub area, you know, a lot of good feedback. You know, there's a cost associated, which we'll include in the budget. But if there's anything else, you know, I said, besides irrigation, which is a topic, and besides the scrub area improvements, is there anything else on the golf course that you would like to see in the next budget year that maybe is not being addressed by, you know, our team currently?
Are you talking about the golf course maintenance or the whole list?
Let's, let's just say the, the golf course maintenance, you know, turtle deer, driving range, putting greens, chipping greens, anything that you would like to see addressed that, you know, is a goal for us as we put this budget together. Because obviously, the maintenance department is an expense department, it's not a revenue generating department. So, anything we do for added special projects or anything like that, I just want to, you know, it's not on the capital list of things that just.
Well, I, I have a question pertaining to the, the straw that you, I mean, I think what you've done, putting the straw out between certain holes in what I would call out of bounds areas, or I'm not sure how you describe it. I think that's wonderful. Are your plans to extend that all over the place or is that just the? Are your plans to extend that all over the place or is that just a turtle run scenario?
It's more directed towards turtle run. There are areas on deer that we would like to expand, either coquina or, you know, maybe create some more native type areas. The stuff that we started with on turtle was more for playability because there was the issue that kept coming up at the golf committee as far as, is it red? Do we take a drop? How do we play these areas? So we tried to first address what I would call higher, higher traffic areas, meaning they're between, you know, two holes, so we see a lot of golf play into those areas. So we kind of attacked it from that standpoint of let's address those areas first. It's kind of expanded as we've gotten feedback from the board and from golfers in general and just, you know, the feedback that we've received has been positive. So Andy and I looked at it, which we spoke a little bit about at Green Committee, could we effectively get rid of this local rule that we had to create for these areas if we expanded a little bit more? So we've tried to do that. In the budget that we're building, we are proposing to add, you know, being able to go into those areas, you know, in the fall before season starts to kind of replenish or do different things. But as far as expanding all over the property, that's a different discussion point, I think.
I mean, I think most of us would agree that what you've done there with the straw, at least I think, has really enhanced the visual aspects of the course. And I guess I'd like to see, if you're going to start it, you've got to finish turtle, it's got to be the whole course.
Well, and that's kind of the process we're in. And the way I looked at it originally, we didn't really have specific money allotted to that in this year's budget, but I felt like for us to add it to next year's budget and present to you that we want to spend whatever the number is. That we wanted to be able to show you what that finished product would look like so that when we ask for the money, everybody understands what we're talking about, so.
So right now the plans are to complete turtle and then maintenance it every year? I guess you have to buy some to replenish it.
Yes, and Mike and I've had discussions as well about how it affects both of our budgets moving forward as far as maintenance. Because those areas are tough to maintain when they're, what I'm going to say, native. Where we've gotten to a point where we can kind of define those areas and go into them and do the maintenance.
Is that straw expensive?
Well, expense is relative, I guess. To buy a truckload, you're looking at $3,900. It's about 1,500 bales of pine straw. And we haven't exhausted the one truckload that we've bought so far, so. My proposal, I can tell you, I don't want to get into numbers necessarily today because we're going to do that later. But the proposal would be doing another truckload in the fall and then year over year you would do one to two truckloads. So you're talking $8,000 a year.
So you think one truckload, once you get it established, one truckload of a year?
Yeah, because what happens typically, you would go in and you'll find some thin areas that are more high-traffic areas or areas that wash out maybe during the rainy season. You'll go in and kind of refresh those areas, but you're not going in every year and wholesale having to recreate those areas.
My question for Ron is, is there money, if you wanted to do it this summer, to get additional straw?
It is very possible. The reason I don't have the definitive answer is depending on the Irma claim, you know, once that's finalized, obviously we've had some expenses that went out prior and some interruption. You know, right now we are trailing a little bit from a budgetary standpoint, but, you know, once that gets reeled in, we'll have a better understanding. But it's tough for me to just say, "Hey, I think we can go spend $5,000, it's unbudgeted." But it is, it is possible. Too early to make that assumption.
Just for this supervisor here, if you have money, I'd like you to spend it on more straw for further extra.
It does look great. I do have a couple of things I'd like to talk about. One of our concerns here has to be the trees that Irma left us. And it's interesting to me that the ones that I think are probably most at risk didn't get knocked down. For example, the tree on number 11 on Deer Run is one of those water oaks that we've had a couple of them now split in half. And to me, it's a liability issue. If that happens when a golfer's around there, then we got a problem. And we know it's a problem because they've done it before. So if we can find the money or put it in the budget to get an agronomist in here, arborist, an arborist in here to do an inventory and look at them and say, "We need to fix this and how we fix it." That's number one. Number two, we've got mistletoe all over a bunch of the trees on the front nine, that needs to be looked at. We've got pine beetles all over the place and pine trees dying. So basically, I think we need to address the tree situation and whatever monies we have to put in the budget to do that, we need to do it. Secondly, we seem to have a propensity to, there's a few bucks in the budget to put flowers on the golf course and around. I'm good with that, everybody knows I like flowers and... But if we're going to do it, we need to put out something that's not an annual so that we don't have to do it every year. For example, instead of putting out New Guinea impatiens, which are really pretty, you've got to do it every year. And you've got to cover them when it gets frost or they're dead. So we need to put out, pick some azaleas, whatever, that don't get killed when we have frost. So we spend the money on perennials. The third thing, I know that we're looking at the wings on the bridges on Turtle Run. I don't know if we have that in the budget or not, but that could be, that could be a liability issue as well. So I think we need to proceed with getting that done. I think Earl said, and I've seen from the golf committee, that whatever that costs, I mean, we have things that we would like to do and we have things that we better do. To me, the bridge is something we better do, whatever it costs. We need to do the trees, whatever that costs as well. So when you're billing your budget, those to me need to be part of it.
With the trees, you know, we've had trees over, you know, since 2004 that die and go away. And there was one year that I remember, the Canadian Can-Am tournament that was held, they raised some funds to do some trees over on Seven. You know, we have not had a tree replacement plan here by any means, but...
We need to do that, but we need to replace water oaks and pines with live oaks that are going to be here and that aren't... I mean, we spent a bunch of money putting out pine trees this high and we scattered them all over the golf course. We shot ourselves in the foot in terms of maintenance. And David Bell and I had that discussion when it happened, I wasn't on any board or anything, so he didn't have to listen to me and he didn't. But, you know, no matter what you do, Earl's people have to go out and do a ring around it. Either that or you're going to run your mowers into it. That's number one, so you've got additional costs to do it every time you do it. And secondly, you can't use big gang mowers because you've got little pine trees in the way. So whatever it costs to go back and, and this is frustrating as all get out to me, we've got to go back and correct the mistakes that were made five years ago. It's not Earl's fault, but it's his problem. So we need to put the money in the budget to get that done so that down the road, we're not having to do handwork. We have a propensity around here to do things that require the guys to go out there with weed whackers because you can't use big machinery. It's like ultimately the dumbest thing I've ever seen. And we do it to ourselves over and over and over.
Okay, I got it noted. Anything else in terms of the golf course that...
Dan mentioned the bridges and I'm just assuming because we weren't involved in it, that, I thought Jim had told me that's, you know, Billy Casper's taking care of that because it would have come in front of us if... Because all this has been handled by the golf committee and I, you know, they don't do stuff if it's Sunon Lake's money or Billy Casper's money or...
We have actually gone out and gotten bids to do that and I think it's scheduled to be on the next meeting.
Was that the bridge?
For you guys to look at.
We don't deal with that, do we? I mean, that was supposed to be...
Well, because it was something that wasn't into this year's budget, it's an unbudgeted item that we are looking at as a safety issue because of the fact that it's washing out. So we've talked about it at the Green Committee level, we got bids together. I'm turning that over to Tanya to present because it's something we feel like we need to do this summer while the golf course is closed and get it taken care of.
So that's going to come to us?
Next week.
It'll come to you, I believe, next meeting.
It's in expense.
Billy Casper is responsible for minor repairs and maintenance up to 5,000. This project could be $12,000 to repair these bridges. So all the capital funds come from the general fund when it, in relation to the golf courses and to buying new equipment or major repairs and maintenance. So in this case, it is around 12,000.
Okay, so we, you know, I first asked Jim about it a long time ago and he said it was going to be under the extra money they had. Because I questioned why the golf committee was dealing, because we were promised that they don't, they don't do stuff like that that comes to us.
That's, well, I'm on the golf committee, so what happened was, we asked, I'm the one that pointed out that the bridge on Five was not... But I recommended that he checked, that Billy Casper checked the bridges out. Billy Casper, we tried to get bids, they got the bids, and that's all golf committee did. We said, "You've got to turn it over to the board."
Yeah, from a budgetary standpoint, if it's not budgeted or we don't have the money to, you know, we're allowed to move from line item to line item to, you know, because things happen, right? But when it's something that's over and above a number, you know, we communicate, you know, our company and the district. And because of such a large amount, it needs to, it needs to be discussed. Now granted, we know that everyone's on board because it's a safety thing, but...
Yeah, it's just not the way it's supposed to be done. We should have been, the board should have been notified right away that there was some bids going to go out and we were going to have to address that. We were told the golf committee deals with nothing that costs Sunon Lake any money. Now Billy Casper wants to do it out of their budget, they can do it. And which Jim did a lot of that. And when I asked him, he said it was going to be paid, of course, maybe the hurricane did something, but you know.
I think originally, and I wasn't here, so I'm speaking a little bit out, but I did work with Jim when I first got here and the bridges were a topic from the day that I interviewed here. I think originally, the discussion was simply on the bridge at Five T. So it was, I don't know what the number was, it was $4,800. So that fit within whatever threshold there is to come to the board. When we looked into it further, because in one of my first meetings, I was asked to look at it, look at the bid, look at, you know, the area. The one at the T has the head wall as well as the bridge itself. It's a foot bridge. It's a dangerous or a safety issue in my opinion because it is eroding. But that got us to looking at the bridge from Five to Six as well, which is a cart path bridge. That one, in my opinion, is much more critical because it's taking the weight of machinery from my staff as well as cart traffic. So in combining those two together, because they both have to be addressed, they both have the same issue. They were, the wing wall itself was not tied into the areas it should be. So it went above a number that I can do anything with without going to Tanya, so.
And I agree, it probably has...
So I think originally Jim maybe said, "Yes, we're going to try to work that in." Because he was talking specifically about the foot bridge, but when it became both bridges, I think it went above what...
And we want to fix that, but just so you know, I mean, the golf committee does not generate that kind of stuff.
No, and I think in this instance, they didn't necessarily generate, they just, they asked, "Hey, can you look at it? Is it something that we need to be worried about?" And when we evaluated it, it was like, "Yes, it is."
Just a comment on that too. The money was there to do it. It wasn't there to, what Jim was going to do. Unfortunately, after investigating it further, as Earl has said, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. He discovered that additional work needed to be done and that discussion did come out of the golf committee. And the golf committee essentially said, "Well, wait a minute, we can't, we have only allocated, or the operations, golf operations, has only allocated whatever it was, $4,500." So when they saw a shortfall, then they said, "Let's bring it to the board so that we can run it by the board and see what their thought process is." I believe that's the way it was.
My only, it ain't even a complaint, but this is, I knew we were taking it out for bids, I heard that. I've heard that for a year. I heard that when I was president. And now it's coming to us, for us to vote on it? And that's, and it's no big deal, but I just don't want stuff like this to happen, you know, because that's not the way it works. If we need work on the bridge, you come to the board.
Without bids, without dollars?
Yeah, you've got to kind of have...
Why would you come to the board with a project?
Well, you turn it here, and we would say, "Go out and look at it." You don't spend the money and then bring it to us for that.
I'm not sure that's a step we need to be involved in.
There you go again, three, two.
It's not a question of a vote, I mean, somebody saw something wrong with the bridge. And that was me, so I brought it up.
But Ray, I'm just saying, that's not the way it's done.
But I'm telling you, how is it going to be addressed if somebody didn't bring it up?
Bring it to here and we'd address it.
Okay. Anyway, moving right along, if we don't have the money to do it and we can't get the money, we'll put it in the budget for next year. Unfortunately, we wanted to do it this year.
I'm sorry, this has to be done quickly, it is a hazard. I mean, you guys are missing this, somebody could get hurt.
Right, it should have been done already.
Correct.
That's all I'm saying. So if we don't make, we'll make an amendment to the budget and we'll go forward from there. We'll get the bridge done, we'll eliminate the hazard that we have and we'll make everything right.
Good.
You know, it comes to the board and they say, "Okay," they're going to approve it. You don't have to put it in next year's budget, it's going to happen.
Somebody got out of jury doing something they shouldn't have been doing.
You could kind of say right now, we could do it right now and just say, "Hey, do we want to go forward with this?" And then in the next meeting, put a budget amendment together and find out what the differences are, the 6,000 or whatever.
We need to look at the numbers, but for $12,000, you know, BCG cannot pay for that kind of expense originally. It was going to be under 5,000. You know, the money was there for the repair, but the repairs are now two bridges. So we're going to, let's look at that. There might be some money left over in the golf capital area. I know we have some savings there, so let us look at all that. And then we have two quotes for the bridges.
Right, so currently, obviously it's not approved yet, but we do the recommendation, the contractor, we have it scheduled for June 11th to be done because contractors have other jobs. So we have them tentatively scheduled to start it and complete the project. So from a timing standpoint, even if you did approve it today or the next board meeting, that's when the work would be completed.
I assume that's when Turtle will be closed?
Correct.
We're doing, just to make sure, we're doing two bridges and the retaining wall?
Correct.
Five on Five, the one that goes over to the T. Both Ts, one...
And that, so from a bridge standpoint, I think for this conversation, the other bridges, you know, we'll, as we go into the budget process and stuff, there's other items.
Yes, yep. Thank you.
If you're talking about additional items, were you talking about the entryway into Sunon Lake, into the clubhouse? Yeah, because I just think, just the back, the entryway into the clubhouse is an embarrassment.
It's not as big an embarrassment as it was before we got here, but it's still an embarrassment.
Right, there's plans for improvements and those discussions will transpire. So anything else on really the golf course before we move on to kind of just F and B and we'll kind of work through these little buckets?
Well, irrigation, when we eventually get to that, will resolve a lot of the corrections on the golf course maintenance, so I'm not even going to bring up all of those issues.
Okay, no, great. Going over to the food and beverage department, you know, we had a busy year again this year. Obviously the kitchen and there's other discussions, but you take those aside from a service perspective. Because, you know, would you like to see increased service, meaning more servers or more bartenders? Or were you happy with what you saw this season or...
Yes, yes, no.
Yes, yes, no, okay.
I agree.
More bartenders, more servers, more personal service. And that will eliminate hopefully very long lines at, you know, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, when the ladies and the men come in from their golf. That little extra attention is good. And there's a lot of people that are doing that, but there still aren't enough.
I think we have to look at training of the people. I think we have to look at training of the people. I've, unfortunately, have been around where some things are said, my wife has heard things that are said to customers that are really not said in the proper way.
Okay.
I mean, I think sometimes some of the people that are working here forget that we're the customers.
Understand.
So, I think they need, there's some room for improvement there.
Yeah, we had customers that were told, "What can you expect out of a, was it Mom and Pop or Hot Dog Hamburger Kitchen?"
Yeah, okay, that's, that is not a standard by our organization by any means, and we'll, we'll increase that.
That wasn't a server either.
Thank you for sharing that with me.
It goes back to the whole training thing. It is not a five-star restaurant, we don't expect it to be a five-star restaurant, but I do, when I sit down and they say, you know, "We've got a special tonight," and I ask them, "What is the special?" And they have to go out and look at the board, and then they come back and they say, "Oh, the special is this." And then they say to you, "Okay," and I say, "That sounds good, I want it." And they come back and they say, "We're out of the special."
No, from a, from a, from a member, resident guest experience, that is not what we'd like to have on a daily basis, but I do appreciate, appreciate that.
It's, it's those little things that continually happen, is all I'm saying, Ron.
We will, uh...
And then I'll, I'll bring up one other thing if we can.
Yeah, please.
They, there's, we have to figure out a better way to separate the massive amount of golfers that come in and the general public or whomever is eating dinner. We don't do a very good job of separating that.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll speak to that really quick.
And that's a challenge.
Yeah, I mean, the solution for that, without building any structure, is go to a straight tee where everyone goes off the first hole and people come in every seven, eight minutes off the golf course, and it would alleviate some of it. The issue that we have, and we've had it since, even prior to the new clubhouse, you know, when you have two golf courses and during season, when you put 144 on one and 144 on another, you have 288 people coming off the golf course in a very short period of time, it would be no different than if we loaded up a couple Greyhound buses and went down to Outback and pulled in the parking lot and walked in. Same, same concept. Now, the good thing is, you know that that Greyhound bus is coming, and a lot of it is service oriented, how many people you have on property, and then in addition is how much space you have to seat people. It is a, you know, as, as you know, for everyone who plays golf or residents who go up and eat, there's times of the day that it is super busy in there. Can there be things done from a service, more bartenders, more servers? Absolutely. You know, and I know there'll be future discussions in terms of kitchen and other things that may address some of this, but from a staffing standpoint, we can do a better job in terms of a budget and training to improve that.
But also space allocation. There are lots of times that the, I guess you call it the banquet side is not being used, and everybody seems to be squished on the bar side, if you would.
That can be, that will be correct.
Yeah, I mean, a better allocation and maybe additional staff to have somebody, you know, keep the dinner people as far down as you can, because quite frankly, when they sit next to a bunch of rowdy guys who have been drinking, it can't be very enjoyable.
Right, no, I, I agree. There's definitely, there's definitely a need to have a separation in terms of, you know, someone else have, you know, a restaurant experience and a bar, it's no different than a lot of restaurants where there's a bar side and a restaurant side, and we combine it into one.
But that's, that's the simple thing, is to put them over there, but as, in the past, they said, "It's when we ran out that, we ran out that banquet room and then you go," and that's the problem.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a popular restaurant in town, and when, when the banquet side is booked for a function, everything gets pushed onto the one side.
And that goes.
From scheduling and...
We're going another argument about the banquet room.
Correct.
So, but it clear that they ought to use the banquet room. And our members that I talk to, when they're told, "Well, the banquet, that facility was rented," and guess what they say to us? "Why is it rented?" You know, because we know we have this problem. So, I, that's, I guess for you guys to figure out.
Sure, and through, through the budget, as we put things together, and I, I've, you know, spoken to a lot of you and, and obviously members, and I do see the, you know, concerns. You know, all of it has a financial impact, we just have to look at it and see what's best for, you know, meeting your expectations and deciding through the process.
I'll add to your confusion.
Sure.
As it pertains to the clubhouse and the restaurant, and I know anybody that listens to this, I'll, another person will just line up, get me, but we're looking to, and we'll be discussing the kitchen today, I believe, and one of the things is, they're looking to enhance service and a lot of different things there. I would suggest that we figure out a way to utilize this community center as a community center and not the restaurant and the lunch area as a card room or mahjong or anything else. I don't want to be walking in to sit down with lunch with some friends that I have come down from up north and find out I can't get a seat in there to have lunch. I'm producing revenue for that restaurant. Four hours of cards is not producing a lot of money for the restaurant. I'm sure they're producing some, but we, we need to address that. I'm not quite sure how we do it, but we have a community center, and that's what this is for, and I think by default, we're just now getting killed. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, I mean, I will say Wednesday's, you know, we, Wednesday's is the main day, I believe, for cards, and many of the ladies do have, you know, I know it's a croissant, chicken salad, tuna salad, we do serve a lot of meals during that time on the other side. I'm not saying it couldn't be in a different location, or it's something we'll have to look at. There is revenue generated by the ladies, but also, you know, you do make a good, you do make a good point.
I'm not suggesting there isn't some level of revenue, okay? What I am suggesting is, one, that is not a community center, okay? Secondly, if we're looking to put a million and a half or a million two into a potentially new kitchen, we need all of the available space we can have if we want to market that place properly. That's all I'm saying.
Sure, understood.
I do, based on that, I have a request, when the, we should send the E blast out and just say, "This was Mark's idea."
Yes, I was going to say, when you tell the ladies that you're going to move them over here.
Well, you know what?
This guy right here.
Hey, that's fine, you can do that, and I have no problem doing that, because four other people up on this board should be doing the same thing.
I am so willing to be here with those ladies and do an open mic with them, karaoke, anything like that.
I will be sure to, I'll be sure to get your name out for this meeting.
We'll get your phone in, we'll get your phone number.
Thank you for your comment.
Mark, we certainly can make the community center open if that's what is decided. I mean, that is definitely an option.
There may be other issues that, that can be addressed as well. I mean, why wouldn't you do a buffet lunch for the ladies? And if they participate, then they can play over there. If they don't, they come over here. And that's Mark's idea, I didn't have it. No, I'll stand with you, I mean, it, when you, when you get yourself in a position, you got a restaurant and you got people who are not eating lunch, then you got a problem. So, it, it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, we can, you know, we can definitely look at it, and there, there are many options that can be done, and we'll, we'll take this back to these notes, and this is what's good, is, is getting your, your feedback, and it's very important, so thank you for that. Anything else on the, just F and B side?
I always have something additional, golf operations.
Okay, switch to golf, sure.
And I think we're going to see this in the, in the Henry's, well, we saw this already in Henry's write-up.
Uh-huh.
I'd like to challenge us on two things, the golf, the quality, the amount of merchandise that we carry in the golf shop.
Okay.
I think we're losing an opportunity there, we're missing an opportunity there. I think we should be carrying, offering more.
Offering more, um...
And I know now it's end of season.
Sure.
You know, we're sold out and all that stuff. I just think there is an opportunity for merchandise, I think a lot of people would like to buy Sunning Lake products, and I don't believe that we always are stocked to the point we should be.
Okay.
And then the other point I would bring up is demo days.
Yes.
I'm not sure how to word this. I don't think our offerings for demo days are worth a, are not, are very good. Almost said something wrong this week.
Okay, so, so for...
Demo days to me, correct me if I'm wrong, is when you offer the membership, one, possible fittings, two, you're showing them the equipment that's available in today's world, and three, because they're wonderful members, et cetera, or people, you're giving them a price break. At least that's how it used to be when I used to go to demo days. Our demo days, in most case, or in some cases, the, the quotes are higher than you can buy online.
Okay, that would be a deterrent for buying through the club, so that...
I mean, you're trying to get people to do business with you.
Is it more, is it more the pricing than opposed to, and I know, and it, over the years, we've done different things. We've had the full demo day where we have like six or seven vendors up there, and then we've done single demo days.
Right.
Is there one that strikes you better, or is it, is it more pricing than the offering? Like, do we need more demo days or more products for demo days, or?
You guys want to jump in? Am I wrong on this?
I'll jump in.
I would like to see more of a fitting type situation. I mean, they'll, they'll hand you a club and you go hit it, well, as soon as you take the price tag off of it, you can't hit it anymore anyway, so you really need more customized to the individual.
Okay, that would help from a member service standpoint, and awesome, I think that's great.
But look, but look at the pricing that we're offering.
Sure, no, if, I mean, if you come to a demo day, I mean, obviously, the goal is to generate revenue for the club and, you know, get something in someone's hand that they can maybe improve their game, play more golf.
Right.
So, yes, if we...
Most of us understand that with certain manufacturers, you can't really do anything, you're locked. I think Ping is one that.
Yeah, that's very restricted.
One manufacturer, they, it's set, but... And that's fine.
Right.
But, I mean, I'm going personal experience, I, I got a quota on a set of irons that was $190 higher than I could buy it online. And that's just, and that was on the manufacturer's website.
But you walk up to tailor made and the guy looks at you and says, "Well, do you want senior shaft or regular shaft?" The guy says, "I mean, you know, what, what loft do you want?" "Well, hell, I don't know, if I knew that, I'd be a lot better golfer than I am."
No, and I, I understand where you're coming from, so I will, I'll talk to our team and we'll, we'll put together a better plan to kinda fit the need.
Well, yeah, I mean, clubs aren't cheap, and you spend $1,000, $1,200, you would like to have them fitted to you.
Sure, absolutely, and, and, you know, the vendor should be doing that along with our team, ensuring that, so if it's training from our side, that, I will look into that. Thank you. Anything else on the golf side before we move into one more, one more bucket?
I'm tired, no more.
Okay, um, marketing, just a brief history, you know, we have, I think everyone agrees, we've, we've got a good hold here in Highlands County of who we are. We've spent some dollars outside of Highlands County for trade shows, and we've done some different strategic things. I have heard from some board members that, you know, we should have a bigger presence outbound, not, you know, maybe cut back on the local and start a little bit farther circle around Highlands County. I don't disagree with that at all, I'm, I'm interested to see what the report comes back. I've seen the first, first set of it, but any comment from you on the marketing that we do for the, you know, trying to attract members of the club?
Well, I have a lot of them, but.
Sure.
It seems to me that if you're wintering in Orlando, let's say, your golf cost is 150 bucks minimum, I mean, why aren't we up there saying, "Hey, you can play Sunning Lake for 50?"
Good point.
That's pretty easy to do, and we drive to Orlando to play golf or anything else, so I would think for 100 bucks, 400 bucks a foursome, we ought to be able to get some outside play. Secondly, the only way people get to Sunning Lake is either find it by accident, or they know somebody who lives here and they come and visit them, and I bet there's not a human in here that that didn't happen for them. So, we, we gotta do, and we're spending, I don't know how much money, on marketing, but it's obviously not working.
Well, I wouldn't, I, I do not disagree whatsoever. I do disagree that it's not working. The funds we have used, you can argue it each way, I mean, we'd spend the exact number, I'll say $50,000 on marketing, you know, we do 3 point X million dollars in revenue. So, there's, there's that.
It's limited. We're spending enough, I agree with that.
Correct.
But the problem is, you know, you always figured out, I wasted 90% of the dollars I spent on marketing anyway. I mean, how are you going to know?
Sure, you, you, I, I cannot agree with you more on, how do you know unless you do something? So, um...
You try it.
I will, we'll put together a plan that's, and that, this was the plan for this year from just feedback we've gotten, you know, I'll call a circle around Highlands County, we're gonna, we're gonna definitely expand, and some of it may be just covered by pulling back here of what we spend. We do know, and we've done stuff regionally, you know, Florida Golf Central Magazine, we've done strategic trade shows, like I said, but, you know, a bigger awareness campaign, we'll say, to, to get those people that are spending 100 to come down, and I'll use the closest golf course that, you know, 27 and I-4, there is a ton of, I'll call transient market, and Canadians and Northerners that come down that play Southern Dunes, that's, you know, $100 to play golf.
You start saying you're not playing that for 50 either.
Right, it's not that far away where we can maybe, my view is, target that area because it's such a short drive, they're already, you know, opposed to going deeper, but I will definitely look at that and we'll, we'll try to include some stuff into, into...
Probably the most cost-effective marketing technique I've ever seen is direct mail, and if we can get that into the, somehow into the hands of the people in Ohio or wherever it is that are coming down for the winter, that might work if we could...
Sure.
They, they can slice and dice those databases pretty, pretty far down now, so we might be able to do some targeted marketing there.
So, so, commonality, maybe a little bit wider reach from a marketing effort and...
Yeah, I also, I also would like, I'm just saying here, if, if we advertise, or if you guys advertise, or some, you know, something for Sunning Lakes in a, in a magazine or something, I'd like to see it.
Sure.
Not to approve it, just to know what, you know, what we're doing.
Yeah, of course.
I think we all should get copies of it.
Yeah, I can include that in our, our reports.
There might be an opportunity also for us, and I don't know, I haven't, I just read the article last week.
Yeah.
That the Chateau Alain, Hotel Chateau Alain, is it? Over at the Speedway over here is hosting the international marketing media golf, anyway. They, they said that there were somewhere between 100 to 150 people associated with the media, and an additional 100 coming in for a seminar. I don't know if there's a, a way that we could get on their schedule for a half an hour, 20 minutes to present to them the benefits of this great community that we have here. You know, one of the things is, we all say that we found this place because we either got lost or bumped into it by accident, and putting it into or, the other way, of course, is through people, referrals, and whenever somebody comes in here, at least my experience is, and they, they actually experience the environment and the golf community, specifically the golf community at this moment, because that's when they're coming into the clubhouse after, and they say, "What a great, great place." And we've heard it from people that have been sitting here in the audience, come up and they said, "You know, we just don't promote this place enough. I've been a member here for 15 years, and I never once had a set up a tee time, and yet I play five days a week." I mean, I, maybe that's common in the industry, I'm, I've only been around for eight years on this part of it.
No, it's definitely a unique situation, which is very...
That's a great story to tell.
Yeah.
You know, and, so maybe we should be able to get into, if we can get into that seminar. I know they block, block out quite, maybe even a booth or something, I don't know.
I'll, I'll definitely look into it.
It's 2019 in the spring, and I've got the article, and it's got the lady who was organizing the whole thing, I'll give you the article, and she would be the contact I would have...
No, that'd be great.
Well, we bring them over here and put them on the golf course for free, or whatever we can do to get them to see what this place really is.
Yeah, this is going to be a big deal for the...
I think it's going to be a big area.
Yeah, absolutely.
We really do, and, you know, not for nothing... We really do, and, you know, not for nothing, but I mean, our golf course itself here on 27 isn't, doesn't look too favorable, so, you know, it's another opportunity for us. But I'll get that article, and I'll email it to you maybe in a second.
Well, I'll look at, we'll look at some additional outreach for marketing efforts. One thing on marketing that I wouldn't mind just getting your temperament on is, how do you feel about advertising on, from a commercial standpoint, on Golf Channel, or Comcast, or something in strategic markets?
Makes sense, if it, it's economically feasible.
Do they do regional advertising?
They do.
They do?
They do.
I certainly would have minded checking it out, seeing what the cost is.
All right. I'll add that to my list. Just to wrap up my little memo, if, if you, you know, what would, if maybe just one goal that you have for, for us, for next year's budget, what would you, what would you put it in? Just one goal.
Keep your capital under 500,000?
Okay, that's a good goal.
Make sure Earl stays with us.
I could, great goal.
We're gonna tie him down, he can't go anywhere.
Right.
You know, I, I do think we're all kidding, and ultimately, we're gonna have to fix the irrigation system on Deer Run, but I don't think that has to be done in the next, pick a number, one year, two years, three years. But there are things, I think, that are more important than others, so we need to figure out how we stay, we can't, I mean, we're not taking in enough money to do a million seven. It's not gonna happen. So, we need to figure out how to stage this, while we all agree that it needs to happen. We need to figure out what's the most important, what's that gonna cost us, and then how does that hook into the rest of it, so that we can do it in a five-year plan, or something on that order. Sticking a million seven in the budget just scares the heck out of everybody, and it should.
Sure.
I mean, we're, we're talking 15 million bucks. Well, that's everybody's wish list. Bottom line is, the assessments are just covering expenses. The only thing that's really making money and putting it back is the utility fund. So, and if you look at it, if you increase everybody's assessment 5%, that only, that don't anywhere to close to touching it. So, we, we gotta figure out how to, how to pare this back to something that's doable.
Makes sense.
So, that, that's what I would like to charge you guys with, because we all know what needs to happen. He does, probably.
Mm-hmm.
So, so, let's, we, we need to take that billion seven, and it needs to be out over the next 10 years, or five years, or seven years, or whatever that term is, and let's fix it a piece at a time, because we can afford to do that.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we'll, we'll take that challenge, and come back to you at the next meeting.
We hadn't really talked about the restaurant.
We have a lot of good discussion on that.
We need the president to lead us here, instead of playing with it.
Well, actually, if you want to jump right into the restaurant, you're talking the restaurant renovation right now?
I guess, and since you, since you've already gotten your hands slapped for leaving off, let me do it. I don't, I don't think anybody sitting up here or sitting out there doesn't agree that the restaurant, that the kitchen is too small, that the kitchen needs to be fixed, that everything else. It was designed wrong, it wasn't, well, it was designed, not designed for the way we're using. Good with that. I don't think anybody else would argue too much that we can't afford to do a million five. So, the question in my mind is, how do we get the same, same question I asked them? How do you figure out how to get this done in a term that we can afford to do it? All right? If you're gonna start expanding the physical facility, it makes no sense to do that in stages. You pretty much gotta do it. Expand the size of the kitchen. But we don't necessarily have, or at least in my opinion, we don't necessarily have to be offering squid and everything else that was on that list. So, the question in my mind is, how do we go from having 12 things on the menu to having 20 things on the menu, and what does that cost?
Well, you wanna get into the kitchen, here's a few things that I was thinking about.
Omar, can I ask, Omar, were you not ready to cover a little bit about this, or are you only gonna cover potential financing of it? Is it, yes, no?
I don't want to put you in a spot, I just... Yeah, all these conversations that we're having kind of tie into each other, because they're gonna go, we're gonna go through this budget process coming up shortly. So, you know, on the five-year capital plan, we have provided some summary to show, once again, the financing issues. You know, the wants, needs, or what we want to happen, there's not enough financing for that to take place, for all of it. We have to make some decisions as to what's the most important, and go from there. We have prepared some financing options for the kitchen. Obviously, there's a page on the, there's a second page on that capital project, that we've put the cost estimate for the construction, and then what we, what our kind of game plan is right now for the kitchen. And our game plan right now is to take a million dollars from the general fund as a down payment for the kitchen project, and then figure out where the rest of the money's gonna come from, for a debt service fund, which we've done a three-year note. Interest on that is about $90,000 over three years. It's about a $700,000 debt service payment. The question is, where do we tuck that in the budget, as far as whether it comes all from general fund? Does it come some from golf? Do we take some from utilities? That's kind of where we, we need to prioritize, where we're gonna get that.
That's assuming that you spend the million two or whatever.
That's assuming we, correct, the 1.3.
So, if we got a million bucks, why wouldn't we say, "You can spend a million bucks, what can you do for that?"
Correct. Yeah, once again, do, yeah.
I'm not sure that, honestly, and we didn't get into this one, and, and I hesitated to beat up on our auditors, but, you know, if, with the notes that we've got in our financial, financial statements, I don't see, it's gonna be a damn brave banker that loaned you a million bucks, or whatever it is, with those, with those financial statements.
Right, so we...
And it's an issue, for those of you that haven't read through that stuff, we got $23 million worth of assets in essence depreciated, and we have no debt, other than, the auditors want to claim that we owe $10 million bucks to Fifth Third Bank, even though the note says we don't owe them, it's not a general obligation of Sun and Lake. So, you, you start putting that in there, and you go through the whole song and dance. But basically, there's, there's a note on their, on the financial statement that we back anybody off, unless they really...
Yeah, that's a conversation we're gonna need to have with the bank. Our intention is to go to one of the local community banks who we have open relationships with, and have that conversation, explain to them what the note is. And like you said, it's gonna be a good faith effort on their end, and tying it to some...
But let me tell you this, if I'm sitting there running the local bank, and all your money's with TD, you know what I'm gonna tell you?
It's an issue.
And it is.
Yeah, it is a problem.
All of our money, we got, what, $8 million, or something like that? It's all with TD Bank. And, so, you're not really supporting the local banks, but you're backing them to support you, in the modest stuff there.
I think, I think what we have to do first, before we go borrow the money, is figure out how much money we need.
Exactly.
And I can tell you, in my opinion, the kitchen money is way overstated. I know that for a fact. Even if we did it the way it's put out on paper, it's overstated. Because I know you can buy equipment for half the price. You know, it's not new, but a burner is a burner, and you can probably get it for half the price. So, I, I know we're overstated there. The other problem I think we have, and this is no offense to Kevin, because he's not even here, so, certainly no offense to him, we went to Kevin and said, "What do you need?" You know, it's like going, you know, if, if somebody came to me and said, "I'm gonna build a golf course, what, how would you like the golf course to be?" Well, I'm gonna ask for everything in the, in the mood.
Sure.
I'm gonna have the perfect golf course.
It's just like telling your kid, "What do you want for Christmas? I want a pony."
Yeah. And I think what we, what we have to do is to sit down with Kevin, and I'm not trying to put anything up, to sit down with Kevin and say, "You know, you, we got your wish list, but now we have to get realistic, and you have to tell me what you can live with. But at the same time, at the same time, Casper has people who run this type of thing, and we haven't even included them. They haven't been here. So, why wouldn't we ask Casper, who is our partner, to send their people here and sit down? Because none of us know anything, I don't believe, about a kitchen, and what is necessary, et cetera, et cetera. But the Casper person's gotta know more than we do."
Ray, do you agree with, maybe we should give them, I just picked out a number now, $900,000, and say, "This is what we got, this is what you're gonna get, do it." And that would save, that would save a lot.
Well, I, I'm not sure I would be in favor of just saying here. Here's $900,000, and then taking all these shortcuts.
This is all, I mean, not...
Well, I, I don't think we tip our heads.
No, no, well, we did.
Well, I can tell you a million four...
If you're building a house, they say to you, "What is your budget?", and you say, "500,000."
Right.
Okay, they're not gonna come in at 700,000.
Right.
They're gonna try to come in as close to 500,000.
Right.
But, but let's not, the, the word we hear all the time in the district here, or in Sun and Lake, not, is do-overs, do-overs, because we shortchange ourself in some areas, and then all of a sudden, we find out we put, we have to put another $100,000 into something, because we didn't, let's say, do it right the first time, or maybe we didn't put enough thought into it. I'm not suggesting...
Right, you're right.
I'm not suggesting some of these numbers here, but we also did, and you, you mentioned, Kevin, and you guys are gonna have to share this with me, or even Ty. How many meetings have they had? How many committee meetings have gone together with, now, Jim's not here, but with, I think you said, you went to Lakeland, and you, did you go to some of the, sit in on some of the meetings? All I know is, it was supposedly a committee put together that went through all of the details of what we wanted, what we wanted, and I was, then they added, or somebody added all of these, this additional whatever.
Well, I was told that the first plan, and correct me if I'm wrong, the first plan that was presented to Kevin and the group, I guess, he said it's not gonna work for him.
Kevin said that.
Now, the, the plan that was presented that wasn't gonna work was to use the existing footprint.
Okay.
And you couldn't get the equipment that Kevin felt he had to have, and he made those calls, and none of us were in a position to argue with him, but there wasn't room for it. So, you know, that was, that was an opportunity to get $300,000 out of the, out of the budget.
See, I thought originally, that we were gonna, we were looking to go into the, instead of extending the walls out, we were gonna go into where the bathrooms were, and go that way. And I, I did, we did check that out, and we can go that way if we want to. We're not restricted by number of bathroom...
No, but that doesn't provide the square footage, is the problem.
Well, my point is, I, I think we need another, I mean, I'd like to have the Casper people come in and tell us what they think.
Yeah, let me, I'll jump in. So, I can have our National Food and Beverage Director down, not next week, but the following week, to spend some time. That's, that can happen, we can set up appointments and talk about it. It really comes down, I mean, obviously, had the committee that worked on this project, had the architect, you know, they designed something that, you know, obviously, the price tag is, is very high. I think we all agree that it's, it's a high number, and it's, it all comes down to meeting the expectation of, you know, what the board, you know, I'm gonna say the board, and I know it's the residents and everyone associated with it. You know, we've had that kitchen since December of 2009, and, you know, the restaurant has grown into something more than even I imagined when the whole thing was constructed. And the board prior didn't wanna, if, if everyone remembers, it was supposed to be, you know, baskets, and the banquet room was, we weren't gonna do banquets. It was, you wanna rent the space for $1,000, bring your own caterer in, use that back room. But then, we opened in January...
Great idea.
The board changed, and the vision changed, and, you know, ran out and found the best chef in the area, which was Kevin, and, you know, forced him to come over here, and here we are today. We know the kitchen's small. It, it really comes down to, you know, when you start adding different, you know, like Mr. Siegel, what you said was, okay, let's go from these items, and let's have more items on that menu. Obviously, that, that creates space, cooking, this and that.
Well, there's also another issue...
Right.
That I've drummed, that I've been beaten is, okay, if you expect me to spend a million, whatever the number is, expanding a kitchen, and you're telling me you can't sell any more meals, that makes zero sense.
Correct.
So, you know...
I agree.
And you're talking $500,000, $600,000 worth of equipment that's gonna get depreciated over, pick a number, seven years. So, in seven more years, you got 600 more to spend.
Sure.
So, I mean, it, it just logically, it, it just doesn't defy, it just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I mean, for, you know, you know, obviously...
That doesn't have one seat, by the way, 1.3.
Sure, well, that's, that's where I was about to go. I mean, we're not solving the, the problems.
Right.
You know, the big problems that we hear is, you know, seating, we're too busy, banquet room's there, everyone's here. That footprint hasn't changed. So, having, having additional items on a menu, which hopefully, you know, from a business perspective, attracts someone to have pizza. We have the best pizza in town, and now we have people coming to have pizza.
Are we gonna get that?
Which, which, okay, more people come, we still have the golfers coming off the golf course. You know, unless we decide a different business model that, you know what, we are not having banquets hypothetically, Monday through Friday, the banquet room will always be a restaurant, it won't be, you know, reserved for anyone else, you know, we'd have to look at that model and matrix, and, you know, make some assumptions.
It affects MGA events, doesn't it? It affects those events.
Correct.
So, what he's saying is, having that kind of business model also affects our, our golfers as well.
Correct.
But you also got, you could have Sunday brunch.
Right, now...
You got, we got, yeah.
So, we, we can stay, we can stay on Sunday brunch for a second. You know, we're not open for breakfast now. So, the kitchen, kitchen is there, you know, we can start Sunday brunch, we'll say in the, in the budget model that I'll come back with, saying, "Hey, we're gonna, let's pretend there's no kitchen renovation." There'll be a Sunday brunch in that, in that budget next year. We'll have some equipment, meaning, I call them action stations, where we'll have someone in a chef coat, doing omelets in a corner, and maybe a carving station here, and try to build this business up that's not being utilized currently.
Well, I think you have to keep in mind where you're talking about building this thing, where we live, because you're not gonna have a $22 plus plus bill.
Correct. It'd have to be at the 9.99, 10.99, probably, price point for breakfast.
But I can tell you right now, we, we go to church, we go out to breakfast, and you have to stand in line.
Yeah.
So, there is demand there during January, February, March.
You know, that, take, take that, if that was a request, "Hey, let's, let's start doing brunches and breakfasts, existing footprint, we'll, we'll find a way to make it work."
I know it's a good, that's a good model, and, you know, you, you don't have to run it year-round. I think that you, you at least run it during your, your busy season. I, I think that breakfast, I, I have friends that are in the restaurant business, own restaurants, and all you have to do is actually go up north on 27 and see what one of the people did. They broke up from their main restaurant to go into breakfast basically only. It's one of the highest profit margin meals you can have.
The only thing that beats it is pizza.
Is what? Pizza?
And, you know, for, for us, for example, now, and I know where Kevin comes from this, if we're gonna do breakfast, it would, it would definitely need to be the buffet style. And the reason I say that is, because of the kitchen, you put, and it, it's okay to do that. We could not do the plate, you know, the menu type, because the flat top, you put four pancakes on, now everyone else is waiting, and it, you know, you go to the Bob Evans, and they have a huge flat top where they can put multiple stuff on. But it doesn't mean we couldn't have that service of doing, you know, some sort of breakfast brunch every...
Try it.
We could work it, I mean, we, we have every Wednesday, it's a very small group, but every Wednesday they set out a breakfast for a group of guys. It's very inexpensive as well, which I question, it's like seven or eight bucks, and I'm not quite sure how, I get about four pounds of bacon, ten pounds of sausage, they got everything you can think of. I don't know why we can't get that, but-
So, from a, from a, you know, so taking breakfast aside, going back to the whole kitchen, you know, it comes down to, you know, I know we're, you know, we're expected growth in the community and, you know, but if you don't, in my opinion, if you don't, we're not fixing all the problems of the restaurant just by doing the kitchen.
Well, we're not thinking correctly. I mean, I'm tired of hearing capacity. I really am, I'm tired of hearing this as an excuse. Does Outback, does Chili's, do they, do they have a capacity problem?
Sure, at times.
But is it a serious problem? No, you know what they do? They figure out a way to get as many customers in during the day as they possibly can. They do early bird specials, they learn how to turn a table more than one time a day. Go figure. Are they not good or what? We don't turn tables but once. Everything is figured on one time.
I understand that, it's, it's a different model, though. I mean, we have a golf course, and, and everyone knows, you'll, you come in after golf, and you'll socialize and fellowship, which is great.
I'm talking about the people who are having dinner. You could do an early bird special starting at three-thirty, you could stay open past eight o'clock. If you want to turn your tables more than once, there are ways to do it without necessarily expanding a building. Or closing in the lanai. I think closing in the lanai would be the biggest mistake we've ever made. I mean, personally.
No, workshop, sorry, Bill.
Right, so, going, you know, going back to, you know, what we want to be, you know, we have, you know, we, so, let's take the capacity issue aside, going back to the kitchen of one point four and bringing it back. I mean, depending on what you want on that menu, because the menu is what creates that kitchen. So, if we want to have more than what, you know, currently we are doing, we have to expand. Now, if, if we want to say, okay, you know what, we're not going to spend one point four, and we're going to, you know, try to, I don't want to use the word value engineer and try to get, and that is an option. Buying used equipment is, is definitely an option, and-
Well, here's the deal-
Something we can definitely look at.
But you know, Ron, I was on the board of a hospital, and we always did surveys, and you know what people complained about? You don't have enough parking, and your food stinks. That isn't the reason people go to the hospital.
Correct.
So, if you ask everybody in there, do you want more items on the menu, the answer is, oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
The question is, are you going to buy more menus? And the answer is, no, I don't think-
Yeah, and I, and, you know, and I may be wrong on this, but I think from people who go out to eat, they, because, you know, if, if Outback offered six other different things, it doesn't mean they're, I don't think they're going to go to Outback that many more times. I think people come to the Island View Restaurant because it does have quality food, good service, I would say, majority of the time, yes, we have our bumps here and there. But we are, you know, this is what we can do, this is what we can produce, and, you know-
Are we building, are we building the kitchen based on this, this menu, or seafood, or this selection of food? Because I got to tell, in my opinion, it's not the menu, the amount of, the amount of choices on the menu, that's a problem. It's not changing the menu and offering different food, that's the problem. I mean, I think we have ten, twelve, fifteen choices on the menu. That, to me, is not, that's good. But when I see the same ten, or twelve, or fifteen every time I go into the restaurant, I don't think that's so good. Plus, the other thing, when you look at the seafood here, is this fresh food? Is this fresh seafood?
No.
If it's frozen, forget it.
It's frozen and breaded and cooked.
Yeah, I mean, who's going to order, I mean, I just-
Right, and, and, you know, obviously, the committee worked on a lot of this, and, you know, if it's a direction that, hey, we don't want to spend the money, and we just want-
I want to spend the right amount.
You know, from a menu perspective, just running a business in restaurants, yes, you want to have a changeover, but you cannot change it all the time, because you want to build, you know, if you, if, we, we go off of what sells. So, if we sell a lot of X, we're going to keep that item on the menu, because we can tell, it's selling for a reason. The stuff that, the bottom half that doesn't move, that's what Kevin kind of moves out. During the specials, he sees what specials work, and then he'll, if they're going well, he'll incorporate it in the menu. We know that, you know, everyone's taste buds are different, you don't want to have the same X every single time, but we also know, because of our footprint, we cannot be a, I'll pick on Cheesecake Factory, that has fifteen pages of a menu, we can't be that. And it's okay not to be a Cheesecake Factory. We know, I think, you know, everyone wants to be more, the question is, we put it on the committee, this is what it came, right, wrong, and different, that's how it was, got to where we're at today. If it needs to be scaled-
You see the menu that they've got up, I mean, there must be fifty things on there.
Correct.
Not selling that, Mr. Siegel.
Giddy head, what are my favorites?
Ron, just something briefly, and I'm only one vote, and I know these guys all have ideas, but that's why I wanted to, because we've done, Joe's done a heck of a job trying to work this out.
I agree.
And it's just, for, for this supervisor, it's too much money. And I will not vote for this much money, I won't do it. But, I, you know, if, if you reduce it, that's why I like to get a, you know, we're going to have to spend some money to, to do this. But I think if we give them a number, you're going to come back, or Joe and Kevin will come back and say, this is what, this is the money the supervisors are going to give us, this is what we can do with it, and if they don't like it, then we don't build it. I mean, I mean, that might be too simple, but I'm not going to vote for this with this kind of money, and, and I also want a pizza oven, okay?
I agree with Mike, but, and I would add this proviso, if you're smart, you look fifteen, twenty years down the road, when you're talking about how big the facility's going to be. So, I don't think building a kitchen that's half as big as we need in fifteen years makes any sense. I think we should go ahead and do the actual physical facility of it, and if it costs whatever, five hundred or whatever-
Five hundred and fifty thousand, that's half the project, so just that building expansion, and getting that building to where we think we need to be now and in fifteen years is half of this cost.
Right, so, I think that's pretty much a no, that's, that's pretty much a no-brainer, we got to do that, okay? Then, secondly, whether you want to enclose the lanai, or you want to expand the dining hall, either one works. You got to go toward, sooner or later, you got to put more seats in here if you're going to work as a, as a viable business. So, however you want to do it, if you go blow out the dining room toward the lake, that needs to be part of the five-year plan, seven-year, whatever, somewhere down the road. You got to get more seats in here if this is going to make any sense. Incrementally, the banquet business makes a lot of sense, because you've already got the expense of the building, you've got the expense of depreciation, you've got the expense of most of the people. But, you know, you don't have to have six hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment, and if you start depreciating six hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment over seven years, which is probably what their useful life is, then you're talking forty-five thousand dollars a year in additional cost to you. We don't really recognize it because we're a municipality, and we do cost accounting, we don't do cost accounting, we do fund accounting. So, a lot of the costs, I mean, you, you look at the numbers out of the restaurant, and you'd say, well, we're making money, or, you know, we're making twenty thousand dollars a year. You're really not. You're really losing about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, I, I just don't think we can afford to dig the hole any deeper. We, we got to figure out what makes sense, and we got to figure out how to get more value. I, I would agree with you, we need to-
We, we need the restaurant, we need it expanded. But, and I feel bad, I wish we had a lot of more money, but there's a lot of other things I want to do at Sun and Lake, and I don't want to spend one point three five three million dollars. And I'm willing probably to spend more than what I really want, if, if you can, and they've worked real hard at this, and we keep coming up with one, one million something, and, I mean, I'd like to say, let's give them a price of nine hundred thousand, see what they can do with it.
I don't, here's what I don't think you want, and that is to say to me, or you, or any of us, it's either take it or leave it, because it's going to be leaving. At least my vote's going to be. We have to go back to Saul Hember, I guess that's what-
Just a couple comments. The million three has been pared down to a million three. We are getting a competitive quote on all of the equipment, just to make sure that all the pricing in the architect's package is appropriate. I don't expect that to yield six-figure benefit. Expand a building to the tune of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars would do a lot of good things. It would enable us to store what's stored in there now in, in a place that made sense. And you could effectively look at, you know, what are the absolute must-have pieces of equipment, and the cost of those, and, and, you know, piecemeal the thing out over a period of time. That would yield improvement immediately. It would enhance the safety of the workers, and it's an unsafe facility now, whether we want to realize that or not. So, I, you know, I could support all that. We've looked at, oh, I pursued some bankruptcy auction websites, looking for used equipment, because Wally, I guess, had some experience with that sort of thing. There's not much out there in restaurant equipment these days, because they're not going broken this economy as fast. Used equipment in and of itself is, to me, not the right thing to do, just because you got a three-year effective life instead of a seven-year effective life, or whatever, whatever the change in numbers is, I don't like that, but, so, again, I think we have to do something. I don't think it's a take it or leave it situation. And if there's a number that somehow can get agreed to and put in the budget, then moving forward from that makes sense, and I think it would be, I think Kevin would be supportive of that. Anything we do is going to make this situation better. If we don't spend a million three and make it ideal, I, I'm not sure he'll be shocked by that, based on the conversations that we've had, so.
It's good to hear that. You've got a hundred and one, that's really not a hard cost, that's, that's revenue loss from closure.
Right.
And you got a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars worth of contingencies in here. You would expect to spend some of that, but maybe not all of that, so, I think your number's pretty good at nine to a million, we could probably figure out a way to do. We got basically four million bucks in reserves, two million of which we need as a six-month revenue contingent. So, there's a couple million bucks, but the problem for me is we're not replenishing that, that's still left over from N R P I.
Right.
I mean, everybody raised all grades of cane about N R P I, and how bad they were and all that, so, they paid us a bunch of money.
They made us solvent.
Friends down the street on the suburbs.
You start raising assessments, that's what graphics will pay. Paying twenty-four years' experience.
But, you know, at some point in time, we've got to start getting ourselves in a position. There's two ways, you can raise assessments a little bit, you can't raise assessments enough to fix it. Bottom line is, what we got to do is have more properties paying the assessment as we can fall. And to your point, we would be glad to see you take that property and figure it out. The question is, how can we do it legally? And that's what Dave was basically saying. We want to, we want to do what you need done, the question is, how can we do it legally?
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry. Supervisors, do we want to agree on a number today? Do we want to have Mr. Banworth come in at the next meeting and talk? But knowing if, if we have a budget going into this project, then, then that, that'll be the number that we will work towards. I mean, again-
Before I would commit to a number, I would prefer that we have Casper come in and give us their opinion.
Well, I fully agree, and, and I think we need to take the time to do that and not worry about artificial deadlines from the architect.
I mean, if Casper comes in and he's, you know, it's just another opinion, I mean, he's, obviously, they should be looking out for our interest, too.
Yeah, well, absolutely, it, it-
He should, what I'd like to see is your, your guy, whoever he is, be giving the information-
Sure.
And then come to us at the next, in two weeks. We have a board meeting in two weeks.
Two weeks.
Come to us in two weeks and tell us what he thinks.
If he's available on quick, yeah.
No, absolutely, I can, I can definitely have him here, and-
And then perhaps, at that point in time, we'd be better to come up with a number if that's what we decide to do. That would be my-
That makes sense to me, I have no issue with that.
I mean, you know, generally, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, Ron, you know-
Oh, no, absolutely, and-
And if I can just make one other comment, and this more clarification, I guess, this list of entrees that Kevin developed, I mean, there never was an intention on his part, and I know this unequivocally, to present that kind of a menu to the public. What, what his point was, was he can't have the variety he'd like to have today because he doesn't have the storage facilities. He takes deliveries five days a week, sometimes six, because he has no ability to store enough goods to, to let him provide a three-day-out menu. Those are the kind of things that, and those were just pick and choose from, not suggestions, so-
I get it, but, you know, and we want to give him what he needs to do the job.
Right, right.
You know, we, you couldn't, we would all get run out of town with rail, if we did enough to make Kevin mad enough to leave. So, what we have to do is be able to accommodate him, because I'm telling you, the guy does a great job with, with what he's got, it's amazing.
It'd be very difficult to replace, there's no doubt.
I'd like, I like the pizza public.
Like I said, that's, that's a, that's a high-revenue item.
Well, I mean, I mean-
Can we vote on that now?
I mean, you can, I mean, in all essence, you can, you can put a pizza thing at the end of the building, and, I mean, there's, there's, there's ways of doing things, it just comes down to going back to the wants and needs, you know, of what you're, what you're looking for. I mean, you don't have to change anything in the kitchen to do a pizza oven. You could build it at the end of the building, and blow out a wall, and, you know, do a pizza stone thing, and, you know, change it. I mean, there's, there's different things you can do. It comes brick oven, that's exactly what I was looking for. It's, you know, obviously, there was an objective, you know, architect footprint, and, you know, obviously, coming in, the cost is very steep.
I'll be the cynic and say that I understand that the consultant gets paid eight percent of what we spend, so the more we spend, the more he makes.
That's, that's a fact. And the concern that I have is that there are additional markups in there that we don't recognize. That's one of the reasons we're looking for a competitive quote on an item, on a basis on the equipment. If we can tow ours up and it's a hundred and fifty thousand less than his, we get a clear message here, so, not that I have a reason not to trust him, but if I were him, I know what I'd be doing.
Well, I, I really would, I've probably been the most critical of this whole issue, and, and I would like to get on record that I'm in favor of fixing what needs to be fixed.
It's just a question of how to fix it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, direction for us, we'll, I'll get with Tom, he's already aware, you know, we'll do all legwork this next week.
Yeah, but I, I, I'm sorry, I want the meeting with your guy to be with Supervisor Branson and with Kevin. I mean, I want, I want all you guys to strike-
What if, and Tanny and I haven't had a chance to talk about this, but what if we scheduled a, a workshop where we can have Tom and the board to talk through this, and no, no offense, Mr. Branson, but just from a direction of everybody, or we can do one-on-one meetings, but I think for the sake of time, schedule a workshop before the board meeting, like-
One-on-one is not going to work.
It needs to be in a group setting.
It, it needs to be a group, because we, we will beat this thing to death, we'll come back and we'll say, well, so-and-so's, and we'll be right at the same spot-
Just so we're all-
See if he can come to the next board meeting.
Oh, no, I, I could- Right, Tanny and I'll work through that, but that's my recommendation, we'll all of us get together and talk freely.
Before the next meeting, right now.
Before the next meeting, correct.
The recommendation is to, is a group. Now, we have to do a ten-day, we have to do a-
We'll get it scheduled today.
Okay.
Yep.
We have to advertise it for ten days.
Yep, we'll get it scheduled today.
And then, just get that done.
But you're just making a-
Figure out what we're going to go from here, because this, this is going nowhere.
It becomes part of the agenda at the next board meeting at that point, is that what we're thinking?
We don't know that we can do this at the next board meeting yet, we have to reach out to Tom and his schedule, is that correct?
We're scheduling something within a ten-day window now.
And we have a ten-day advertisement window that we have to meet as well, so, we could make it for the next board meeting, but let's see what his schedule is.
Yeah, his, the, um, the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth of this month were the best days for him to be here.
What days are those?
It's a Wednesday and Thursday.
We could do that, that's why we did it the way we did this.
The meeting's at- The meeting's at Friday. Does that now work?
The other side of the coin is here, we could do exactly what we did with this workshop that you kind of requested. Instead of having a special workshop, we could piggyback it on the twenty-seventh meeting, unless, I don't know all the agenda items on that yet, but some of them. Why couldn't we do it on the twenty-seventh and do that, the same type of discussion?
If Casper speaks, I'll accommodate it.
The dates he said that he could be here was the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, preferably the twenty-fifth and sixth, which is a day before the board meeting. Doesn't mean I can't go back to him and force and say, I need you here the twenty-sixth and it is what it is, but I know we want to get together, so.
It would be Tuesday before we could get a special meeting advertised, so...
That'd be the twenty-fourth. Oh, Tuesday of next week?
Tuesday of next week.
By the time we submit it, it's already too late for Sunday. It'd have to go to Monday. If we sent it to them today, I think the earliest they could get it into the paper is Tuesday. Is that correct? Tuesday, Wednesday?
So the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth would technically...
Tony, just to be clear, the session we're in right now, did that have to be advertised since it was part of this meeting?
Board's meeting, it has to be advertised.
Now, I know that, but the workshop piece that we're now involved in...
No, no, if it's going to be incorporated into the twenty-seventh meeting now.
Okay, so that's what we need to push towards is the twenty-seventh, is that? Then we don't have to mess with the ten days.
We don't know that Mr. Banworth can be here on the twenty-seventh, so let's...
That would be the idea situation.
That would be ideal, that would be ideal for us.
If he is, then that would be, okay, that's fine.
If it's not on the day of the board, it has to be.
Yes. If it's not on the day.
Yeah, okay.
The twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth is not going to be, not going to work because of the ten days.
That's fine.
So really, the only option we have now, we can advertise because we don't have enough time.
Correct.
So we would have to add it to the twenty-seventh meeting as a workshop if he's available.
Or the week after.
Or after that, correct.
But if he's here those two days and can phone or something on the twenty-seventh, maybe we can act up.
Yeah, I'm trying to get an answer right now, but...
Or the week after, if we have to do so.
I don't think we want to do that.
I'm not sure a conference call would work. Didn't work with the... Yeah, no, live is how I would prefer it. I mean, the one with the larger was a little difficult, I thought, for most of us, so I can't imagine.
All right, so we have direction in terms of the kitchen to come back with, I will say, with alternative options.
So just to be perfectly clear.
Correct.
You're going for the twenty-seventh to have him join us as a workshop at the end of our regular scheduled meeting.
Correct.
If he's available.
Correct.
Perfect.
But you're going to have meetings prior to that, so you...
Oh, yeah, internally, we are and there could be, you know, obviously, some one-on-ones.
I mean, would somebody, I mean, would Kevin, so...
Absolutely.
So my next question would be, how quickly will you know if he's available on the twenty-seventh? So if we have to do a ten-day advertisement for another date, which would be after the twenty-seventh, which is an ideal, but certainly would be before our next board meeting, when would you know if he's available on the twenty-seventh?
Today. Today. I'll have the answer today and hopefully while we're in this meeting.
So then, Tanya, if we find out today he's available for the twenty-seventh, that will be fine. If not, then let's look for some days out where we can have it as close to the next, no, we can't have it on before the twenty-seventh, but after the twenty-seventh, okay? And we'll go forward from there. What's my turnover?
Next. What's next?
January.
Huh? Irrigation?
No, wait a minute.
We got to do it.
Originally, way back when, Roe was going to discuss a little bit about irrigation. Are we scrapping that for now and going to discuss it later, or are we going to discuss it now?
Now, let's get it over with.
He was fully prepared to do this.
Sure.
He had a hundred and fifty-page presentation.
No, no. Obviously, we all know irrigation's needed at some capacity. Do we think doing both courses at the same time is feasible? No, it's probably not. Mr. Stiegel probably said it best, that it probably needs to be phased in. We are having the irrigation consultant come out and do, call it the mapping of current coverage compared to what could be done with an upgraded system. You know, the number-one priority for us is the greens loop. That's where we've had most of our issues in the past. But I think at a later time to discuss this further, when we have a little more definitive answer. Obviously, cost associated to it is all based on what wants to be covered and what wants to be replaced. And I think it's best to go through the consultant part first because then we can put it up on the screen and show everybody what's associated with it.
So we are having the mapping done now?
He's supposed to be here next week.
Okay, great.
He's working at Bay Hill this summer. They just started that project and he's going to tie in his first visit with us next week because he's going to be in Orlando anyway.
It's kind of premature at this point to talk about it until we get his report.
I think for us, we can have a lot more productive discussion once he does his portion of what we need because then we can discuss, you know, you and I have talked individually to some of you, just, we have to have an idea of what we want, which, you know, again, you guys talked earlier about Kevin, if you ask, what do you want? I'm going to give you exactly what I would like to have, but we also have to fit that into what works for the community. There's areas out there that don't have coverage that I think everybody assumes does have coverage. I'm going to identify those, we're going to address those. We'll be able to talk specifically about, you know, to the left of number five T, it doesn't have coverage. So we can talk then productively as a group, is it important to have coverage there? To me, aesthetically and playability-wise, it is. It may not be to everybody sitting up there. So that's kind of what we have to marry together. Once we do that, then we can effectively say the number is, you know, half a million dollar, whatever the number might be. It's premature to me to talk about any number until we have that plan.
As long as the expectation is, based on what our conversation was, and I'm sure you've had it with the other supervisors, the expectation is that this survey or this analysis of the course and the areas of coverage and the areas that aren't covered, that we have the various options, one, two, three, or whatever. And just to let him know that that's our expectation, that we're looking for some different options or potentially even phased-in options.
Absolutely. And that's what he'll provide. Here's option A. It's similar to the kitchen, it's this. Here is what has to be done, in my opinion, which is the greens loop. It's this. It'll be line item now, if we say we're going to do greens now and, oh, by the way, we do want to do these coverage areas, but it's going to be five years from now. We have numbers to it, we have a plan for it. Then we can say, here it is, we figure out how to fund it over whatever the number is. But we have to go through that process because otherwise, we're talking about what my opinion, which is based on experience, is versus the wants of what we want to do versus, you know, what I want might be different than what somebody...
Why did the million-seven come from?
The million-seven is a, if you do starts in the last two years of golf courses, if you look at eighteen-hole equivalents as far as acreage of what we have, numbers of heads of what we have, to replace a system, soup to nuts, mainline, valves, hardware, two-wire system, controllers, it's roughly that number. Right now, they're doing one in St. Pete, it's 1.7. They're doing one in Orlando, it's 2.2. They're doing one near a pop cut, it's more than that.
If we just replace what we have now, would it not be a million to a million-one? Or is what your agronomist told me...
You might could get it done for 700,000 if you replace only what's there. What I'm saying is, to me, it's not a smart move for us to replace only what's there.
Okay, I would like one of the options to be if we just replace the existing system as it is today. So we have something to build off of, if you would.
When you say, let me quantify this, because that number will be in here, it'll be in there. When we're talking replace what we have, we're talking mainlines, valves, everything. Okay.
I mean, I was led to believe it's between a million to a million-one.
That's easy to do.
And I think that would be a good starting point, then you guys can say, but this is not done, this is not done, this is what, you know, so we have something, a starting point, if you would.
Sure.
I think it's important, though, that we, if we really want to be somebody, we need to fix the green situation because we're throwing water 360 from all four corners and that means you're watering the front basically twice, you're watering, I mean, you're watering the sand traps, we got to fix that part.
Ideally, what I'd love to see happen is to take the million-seven and reduce it by four, five, six hundred thousand, but do Turtle Run's greens right away. Instead of waiting, I think you had down in the paper, six years to do their greens. If their greens need a better watering system, I'd love to be able to do that as quickly as possible. That's just my...
My thought is you fix Deer and Turtle maybe in two years, Greens, and then you go to the rest of it because if you got good Greens and you got decent airways, probably all right. When you mess the Greens up, you're in a world trouble.
Is there an opportunity for catastrophic failure on Deer? I mean, it's a forty-year-old system with a 25-year life expectancy.
Sure, absolutely.
What would that look like, other than losing a pump?
Oh, I mean, you know, with the isolation valves that don't work and it breaks, I mean, we're out, I mean, if you lost it, we would have to, I mean, watering the Greens would be the most important part. You couldn't water the golf course properly. I mean, it is definitely, but it's, you know, it's no different than a hurricane. You just don't, you know, you don't know if it's going to come hit us. We may get not one break this summer. Historically, we've continued to have breaks.
Catastrophic failure is, you got a main line that breaks, well, that takes you what? A few days to dig up and fix?
An order pipe.
I mean, it's not like it's going to take six months to fix.
And in the heat of summer, you go without that plant that's living in his roots of, you know, credit to him, they've gotten deeper in the things he's doing, but it does not take long for that plant to stress out and, you know, go like that. Luckily, because of the district and a lot of the equipment that you have, the water trucks and different things, you know, we can react quicker, but would there be an impact? And would the Greens go adversely? Absolutely. Could it mean enough that you have to sod again? Absolutely. It is, you know, the sooner, you know, we get through this analysis first, step one, do the report, look at it, and then decide how it's being done. If it's done tomorrow or done 2019, 2020, just everyone's on the same page.
Which meeting would you be able to have that, do you think? Are we going to make it in two weeks or are we going to have to wait till the one after that?
No, we won't be able to turn it around that quick. It's an in-depth analysis.
So when do you think we'd be looking?
We physically go out and essentially GPS every head that we have currently so that we can get the mapping and layout of what we have. We have to talk about what we deem the corridors of turf and things like that.
We think we get it done in May?
I'll have to ask. I can't answer that because I...
Because we got to...
Yeah.
It's extensive type of report. It's going to take some time.
Right, he'll be out next week and we'll get a definitive answer distributed.
I can do it, Tom.
Yeah. And then just from, Tom responded back, he could be here on the twenty-seventh, so we'll have him in a day prior, but we'll be talking in between, but the twenty-seventh for sure.
Okay.
We're going to be in the budget process and not have any idea.
Well, I was going to say, that was just my thought process too, is we will be going into the budget process starting pretty soon in May-June timeframe. You know, ideally, the better feel we could get for those numbers, we can kind of think it through a little and figure out where it's going to go.
Oh, absolutely, we're going to move swiftly through it.
In regards to greens loop, we can back and we balance out sort of minimum for their time with that.
We'll probably have a placeholder from a number standpoint.
Okay.
And probably go on the higher end just to have it held.
Well, you've got a placeholder, but don't make it too high because you may get too high and it's...
Well, I know, just from prior with, we'll talk irrigation with, when your agronomist came in and said some numbers and then it changed, I want to make sure, will you let the expert do it? And then obviously, no numbers finalized until it goes out to bid anyways and what comes back, so. You always want it to be less than what you put in.
Yes.
We understand that. Are we going to cover any addition? This is such a great book. I had many hours of enjoyment going through it.
It is a good book.
Yeah. And if we want to cover anything else in here, we're not going to go page by page, a line item by line item.
I think...
Mr. President?
No, I'm asking the board if they have had sufficient information.
No, I think at one point in time, we have to go page by page or line by line of the cover sheets and decide if we want to go forward or we want to, what I would call, take it out of the five-year plan and create a wish list of things that can't fit that perhaps if we're in a better financial shape, we could draw upon down the road. I think to show on paper that if we did everything, we're $7 million in the hole, is not the proper way to go.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely correct on that, and that's why you'll have the pleasure of spending four or five hours in a workshop, going line item by line item.
That is expected, I thought. Because I think everybody put a lot of time into this. I think we should do that. Is that the plan?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Eventually, when we get into the budgeting process.
That's fine.
President, there was a few items that we briefly discussed at the last five-year capital workshop that we've put a star next to. And the reason why we started them is there was some discussion as to whether we want to try and include them in the next year's budget. So we want to try and finalize as much as for 18, 19 as we can, so when we put these budget books together for the workshops, we're putting all these wants and then we can start taking them back out as we see real numbers. So do you want to go through those?
Yeah, matter of fact, I had some questions on that, I just didn't want to bring it up to Ron because I didn't know.
Do we have an eight-seater golf cart right now?
I didn't think so. Do we?
It's a four.
And the star item was a $12,000...
The tablets are the $12,000 item, so that was brought up. Maybe we want to prioritize that a little bit more and try and fit it into 18, 19, so we started that. And then the Turtle Run restrooms was the other item that was started.
I would suggest, this is in my humble opinion, that those tablets be moved in as soon as we can move them in because it's been a moving target for five years and five budget cycles.
Yeah, well, let me, I'll, yes. And then the eight-seater, I mean, obviously, I do apologize, I know some items were put in and I might not have the answer, but if it's something that this board does not want to see, we can take it out.
Well, I'm just trying to understand.
How often would you really use something like that?
An eight-seater?
It was for the camps, for the juniors transporting kids around.
Well, you also got a new beverage cart in there.
Right.
Supposedly, we're going to get numbers whether we're making money on that thing or not, but...
And this is, I don't think we should, Charlie picked this, can't we do it when we do the workshop?
He was asking, what Omar was essentially asking is a couple of the items that were asked are stars.
Right.
That way, when they're preparing the books or these sheets for the budget workshop, he can allocate them and move them into different areas.
Okay.
I believe that's what...
So, yeah, so the request is the tablets and the restrooms to move up a year and then to plug them in during the first budget discussion, and then we'll see what the total capital request is, how that falls within the general fund budget.
And if we have to cut down, then we can prioritize, yes, keep the restrooms, no, keep the tablets. And we'll go through that process on the first, but we want to try and get everything into this first budget workshop that the board's requesting.
Correct.
So we're moving the tablets into, hopefully, the next budget, 18, 19 workshop.
So, we're moving the, the tablets into, hopefully, the next budget, 18, 19 workshop. We'll move in the restrooms, uh, one year, uh, one budget cycle to 19 and 20, 19, 20 cycle, and the dog park obstacles will probably stay in 19, 20.
Wouldn't it be more important to keep the irrigation? I mean, if you move the restrooms up, that's 60 grand that we don't have to spend.
Well, we're, we're waiting to see what we get from the irrigation.
Correct. We have 850 into the irrigation right now for 19, 20, right?
We won't be spending that on things, but, you know, I don't know that we need dog park obstacles.
Well, that's why I was just saying that I don't see moving up.
And I don't know that we need bleachers for the ride. You're building a dog, you're building a dog park.
And the dog park obstacles, once again, Tanya mentioned the 20,000 that we have in recreation. We're not gonna do the clearing. We may be able to accommodate some of those obstacles within this year's budget when we get the dog park all established, and we may be able to take that out of the budget, so. Once again, we're just looking for your high-priority items that you want in this year's upcoming budget.
Dog, dog park obstacles are not a real one.
That wasn't a high priority on my list. You were against the dog park. Now you want obstacles.
Well, if you, if you're building a dog park, why would you not give them their things, their toys? Why would you wait a year to do that?
We're gonna test-market to see if they like it.
They don't. They don't need obstacles. They're gonna run around sniffing, carrying them. The, the point of the dog park is to let them off the leash, so they can run and play. But these are toy, these are not, they're, these are... These are like the obstacles to teach them how to run and get, run through those little tunnels. You aren't gonna do that unless you take them and make them do it. They're not gonna do that on their own.
Well, then why buy them at all?
Why?
Why buy them at all? That's what I said.
That's why it's in the next budget cycle after this. This is out of control, okay.
No, and I, I do wanna bring up one thing on the dog park. How are we coming with the benches?
Some benches are there.
No, they were...
Some.
He was, they was my last mic.
Michael. Look, Michael, actually, before we go on to the next one, under the buildings and grounds, you had that asterisk as well. Uh, you have it in the 18, 19 budget for the clubhouse renovations, which is in, in reality, the kitchen, correct? Okay, so, we're not moving that out of there. We're just gonna...
We're leaving it.
We'll leave it for now and figure out what's, what happens, okay? The other question was, our dog park man here, over here, would like to know what's the status of the benches.
Well, we had, people have, uh, said they're gonna donate money, so, so, uh, we've got a few checks already. Um, they've been sitting in my drawer since today, 'cause the dog park just went through today. Um, we're gonna try to purchase them with donations right now.
Yeah, no, but we're now gonna put the dog park in.
Omar and I are on that committee. People are donating money for the, uh, the...
Are we gonna have benches when the thing's built?
What?
Are we going to have benches for people to sit while the dogs are running around?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
If you can deliver, I'm happy.
We actually had a number of people that came forward and said they would...
Right, we'll deliver them.
Deliver them. Okay. Any more stars you need moved, Omar? Omar, any more stars need to be moved, or do you have the information you want?
I think we're all set.
Where did you move the bathrooms?
The supervisor, they made me move backwards.
Do we wanna talk about moving stuff back, 'cause we do that later.
So, bathrooms are in the fiscal 19, 20? Is that correct? Bathrooms are in 19, 20 fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
Temporarily, anyway.
Before we go any further, I guess, I need a little clarification. When we were talking last week, Tanya and I, about, um, some of the projects that were out there, and you talked about the potential of financing part of that, $3 million, 4%, whatever it was, um, based on Dan's comments, that may not be all that easy to do. I mean, or do you know you could do that, or?
Locally, I believe that we, yes, we can do that. Um, we haven't confirmed that necessarily, but I think with, with the financial statements that they, the way they are, and the notes that explain, and as we can explain why the debt is in there like it is, um, I do not feel that we will have a problem locally borrowing that kind of money.
Shouldn't we know that for sure?
We can, we can try to reach out, yes.
I think the first thing we need to know is how much we're gonna spend and what we're gonna do.
I mean, that's the big...
There's no point in me going to the bank and asking for $2 million if we're only gonna spend 500,000, which we can pay for cash. So, number-one priority is figure out what we want, what our wants are, how much we're gonna spend, and then I can go from there. Just figure out what the financing options will be.
You wouldn't be spinning your wheels if you went down there. I mean...
Well, if we can have the conversation, and we have to eliminate the conversation.
I mean, you can have a conversation with them. They'll give you an idea.
Right.
I mean, I firmly believe that we can't do everything we're gonna need to do in the next 10 years without incurring debt, and I think we need to know sooner rather than later whether we even have that ability.
All right, we'll start having those conversations.
I'd like to talk about, too, uh, soon, uh, the water rate.
The what?
The water rates. Finance it maybe that way, too.
I didn't hear what you said. That will come up in the budget.
Water rates.
When we talk about...
Water rates.
Oh, water rates?
The water rates, yeah.
Now, is that, that's a budget conversation?
Yeah, it could be a budget, yeah, because it would be a, a rate change.
Oh, yeah, I know. It's the only revenue stream.
Honestly, I think your issue's gonna be in borrowing money, is the terms that you gotta get to, 'cause, you know, you're gonna, in essence, be an unsecured creditor, if you will, 'cause you can't, you got, you got nothing to pledge other than faith and security. So, you, three years, maybe that works, but, you know, we're talking a lot of money over a five-year plan, so, I don't know. I don't know if it's gonna help you a whole lot, but worth a shot.
Well, of course, we'll go to the bank that we currently perform all our banking at is TD Bank, and that would, of course, be our first conversation, yes.
You might be able to use some of that as collateral.
That's true.
I could ask some... You'll move CDs to one local bank, so you go ahead and roll them down.
If we went with the five-year plan, as we're looking at it... Sorry. If, if we're looking at a five-year plan with no changes and no acceleration, uh, future values or anything, uh, we would be looking at $16 million in five years.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, do you guys, do you guys happen to agree with what I said about creating a wish list, taking out the ones that we can't afford to do? So, that the five-year plan at the end is within 100,000 to 200,000, where we think we're gonna actually be? Couldn't that be the way to do it?
I think that's realistic.
Absolutely. So, that's what we're gonna try to accomplish?
Yeah.
But I don't think taking them out completely makes sense, if, unless we know we're never gonna do them. If there's something, if there's something we know that needs to happen in the future, but we can't identify the timing, it needs to be out there in year five, because creating a separate document for those kind of things doesn't make sense.
Yeah. I mean, you've got, you know, for when we're not here, or somebody replaces us, you wanna give them a good plan? I always get, I had a one through three, four, five, and then five and, five to 10. There you go. There you go, exactly.
A 10, a 10-year.
That would be perfect. This is just smart.
Yeah. You gotta have a roadmap. You have to have a roadmap. Any other discussion?
Okay, they always said to me, "If you don't know where you're going, how you gonna know where you are?"
Exactly. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your time.